Good evening, everyone. It is now 5:30, and I will call our special work session to order. We have two items on the agenda this evening, and the first item, like all of our work sessions, we go directly to the items for discussion. And the first item is the update on the freeway landfill and freeway dump, presenting this evening as our Community Development Director Jenny Faulkner and Mr. Kirk Kadelka, who's the MPCA Assistant Commissioner. Jenny, you want to hit it off?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I think what we'll do is we'll start with the presentation from the MPCA, and then I'll follow up with more of council policy discussions and kind of next steps from there. They've got a good update on where they're at in their process.
Okay, very good. And then Mr. McGowan is present in the audience, and he had requested to speak. So when you're done with your remarks, and before we address your recommendation, we'll hear from Mr. McGowan. Okay. Good evening, and welcome, Kirk.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, for the record, my name is Kirk Kadelka. I'm Assistant Commissioner with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. I have a colleague with me today that we're tag teaming.
My name is Hans Navy. I'm the manager of the closed landfill program.
And so what we thought we'd do is just go over a little bit more on freeway landfill and dump. We've had some increased work on it since we last visited late last winter. And so some of these slides will seem familiar. They are part of our overall story of freeway and how we move forward on it. So we'll try to go over some of those you've seen before, but really make sure we focus on the why that we're looking to have activity at this site, especially since I know this is a taped meeting. There may be people for the first time joining this conversation. So first off, we always have to talk about how we handle pollution, contamination, and waste. And there really are three ways to address it. One is prevent it. The second is to manage it. And then the third is to clean up. And that's what we're having the conversation today. And the reason we always bring this up, especially when we're dealing with cleanups of contaminated properties, is that as we go further down that list, it is more expensive, and there are more potential risks to human health and the environment. And it explains why so much of our work as an agency, along with our partners and local units of government, is on the prevention and management of pollution and waste. So real quick, the closed landfill program, it was created in 1994. And the closed landfill program is an answer to the Superfund process and its inability to address contamination at landfills in a way that met the needs of public, or human health and the environment in a way that didn't bog down. Just real quickly, the Superfund program is an effort to have the responsible party move forward and do the cleanup or any activities that are needed for a site. However, in most cases, that's one or two parties, and there's disagreement during that process. But when we look at a landfill, we start bringing in tens to hundreds of various parties. And our history has shown in the late 80s and early 90s, this really bogged down to administrative activities and legal wrangling, and not much was being done to actually clean up sites. So the closed landfill program was created. What says is that landfills have been turned over to the state for their long-term care in perpetuity, these landfills. And the result is the state does that work, and then the landfill owner needs to turn over their insurance records that they had at the time, and then also allow for those activities to be done at the landfill that are needed to clean it up. In most cases, those properties are just handed over to the state. No one wants anything to deal with them, and the state moves forward with it. I'm going to just quickly go over this. We really look at our risk at each of 110 landfills, and how do we move forward with it. And this is a list of those activities that we do. This is an annual risk assessment that we do. And freeway landfill is currently the highest ranked site on there, and that's why you see us spending so much time on it and talking to the legislature and to various parties about the facility. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Hans.
All right, yeah, thank you. Madam Mayor, it's good to be with you today, also members of council. This is a slide you've seen before. This sort of gives an overview of what's going on in the neighborhood. So there's things to call out on this map. We have the Minnesota River, also freeway landfill and freeway dump, the Kramer Quarry, and the Burnsville landfill operated by Waste Management, which is still in operation. Also of interest is the drinking water supply for the city of Burnsville, and also the city of Savage. So in terms of history, this is the history of the freeway landfill. It starts in the 60s with the purchase of the property in the beginning of waste disposal. The late 60s, early 70s, this was permitted by the city of Burnsville and also by MPCA. This is a permitted disposals. And then through the 70s and 80s, the environmental regulations really come online. I'd say about 1969, sort of there was like this awakening of environmental things in the thinking in this country. And then a number of years later, sort of the environmental regulations come online. So what that did is it encouraged and prescribed landfills to upgrade their operations, either that or closed. And in this case, this landfill was closed. It was also added to the Superfund list in 1986. So today, when we talk about freeway landfill and freeway dump, we're talking actually about two different piles of waste on both the east and the west side of 35W. The story of waste disposal in this area starts with freeway dump, which actually came first. It operated from 61 to about 1971. It's a smaller area of waste, about 34 acres of waste. And after freeway dump closed, there was freeway landfill, which was actually permitted. So in general, this is, and so both of these facilities are unlined, and they present a risk to human health and the environment. They're located very near the drinking water supply for both the city of Burnsville and the city of Savage, and also the Minnesota River. This is not a good place for this much waste to be, but also was permitted by state and local government. So this is a reflection of how our thinking has changed over time. At one point, we didn't quite fully understand the risks that these things posed, but with the current understanding today, we know much more in terms of potential risks, contamination, and levels of different contaminants that are considered hazardous. So much of the work we do in the closed landfill program and the remediation division in general are things that happen underground. And sometimes they're hard to see. So we wanted to give you a little picture of what our testing, analysis, and evaluation has shown what's going on underground. So this is a block diagram. It shows the freeway landfill, and the freeway dump, and also the Kramer Quarry. The big story here is really about what's going on with the groundwater. For landfills and dumps, piles of waste, there's three things we're concerned about. We're concerned about the pile of waste itself and exposure to that. We're concerned about the leachate. When water, rainwater percolates through a pile of garbage, pile of waste, it creates leachate. If you've had like some rainwater get into your garbage can at home and accumulate there, this is what we're talking about. This is like sort of the same thing what landfill leachate is. We're concerned about that. We're also concerned about the gas. When it breaks down, it creates something called landfill gas, which is primarily methane, which is an explosion hazard, but also contains contamination as well. So the story with the groundwater is that there's a tremendous amount of pumping going on in the Kramer Quarry. And what this has done, this has lowered the groundwater table to keep the waste from being saturated by the groundwater. And it's also reversed the flow of groundwater that would normally be in part flowing to the Minnesota River. It's now flowing towards the pumping source. The pumping source is discharged to back to the Minnesota River at 8.4 million gallons per day. And also, there's a secondary discharge of 2.5 million gallons a day that's used for drinking water, a beneficial use of this to the city of Burnsville and the city of Savage. So this represents current conditions under the current pumping. One of the drivers for this project is really about future risks that will occur when the day comes when the pumping is no longer happening, when Kramer has ceased operations, and that large hole in the ground, the quarry begins to fill with water. So when the pumping stops, the water will resume to its natural state, which is closer to the ground surface than it is now, and also a flow that goes both to the Minnesota River and to the new Kramer Quarry Lake. This is the case for both the freeway dump and the freeway landfill. Stopping the pumping will increase the risk and the amount of contamination, the possibility for it to move. So the legislature has appropriated to us specific funding for this, for the preliminary aspects of this project, which are investigation and design. So this is what the slide talks about. 2017, $3 million was appropriated from the Closed Landfill Investment Fund, and it's available to us through the close of fiscal year 2021. And these are funds we're using for the design and the investigation.
These are also funds that the city helped testify to, to make sure it was available this year and next year in the continuation. And we want to thank the city for that help at the legislature to make sure these funds are continuing to be available to complete the work.
Kirk, can you also speak to, because when we were there, there was a caveat that the legislature put on the extension of those funds and the use of those funds?
The work is to continue moving forward and a report back to the legislature on it.
Yeah.
So Mr. Kadelka talked about the closed landfill. Program is a way to make Superfund work for dumps, which generally, our experience was it wasn't working so well for dumps, which is why the closed landfill program was created. The freeway dump and freeway landfill are still in the Superfund program, but the closed landfill program helps it to work within the context of the Superfund program. Freeway landfill is listed not only in the state Superfund list, but also on the federal Superfund list, which is an indication of the risk, real and potential to human health and the environment. Superfund generally has four stages. So the first stage is becoming aware that there's an environmental problem and doing an initial screening of prioritization. And in this prioritization, it ranks at the top of the closed landfills we're working on. It scored high enough to be on the federal Superfund list. This is all sort of pointing to the fact that there is a real concern here. First stage of Superfund is realizing that there's a real concern here. The second stage is figuring out where the contamination is. And we're mostly through that stage now, for the most part. The stage after that is what we're entering into right now, which is figuring out what could be done about it. That's called feasibility study. It's evaluating different options. The fourth stage is doing the plan that you developed. So this slide talks about the investigation part. Superfund calls it remedial investigation. Those are administrative words for figuring out where the contamination is. So several years of investigation culminating in a final remedial investigation report recently posted on our webpage. The conclusions are we're finding methane, which is the primary component of the landfill gas in the explosive range. We're finding contamination in groundwater above health-based values. As is typical for a landfill, we're finding sort of a cocktail of contamination, different types of contamination. We're concerned about, the things that we're most concerned about are two of the emerging contaminants that weren't even known to look for when the earlier investigations were done. And when the landfill was permanent, we didn't really even know these were things to be concerned about. This is the PFAS compounds and 1-4 dioxane. Also, the chemicals we also commonly see in waste are solvent kind of chemicals. These volatile organic compounds, also called VOCs, and a suite of metals. Because the Minnesota River is also there, there's different health standards for drinking water and surface water. We're also seeing exceedances of the surface water quality standards. And we arrive at these conclusions from multiple rounds of testing and evaluation. So that's one slide that presents all the findings, but really is a very large, extensive investigation process called remedial investigation, which brings us into the stage of figuring out what the best possible options are. Superfund calls this feasibility study. What we're doing here is we're moving forward with really two different options. One is to build a modern landfill on the property. A modern landfill has a cover and a liner and methane control and leachate collection. To build a modern landfill on the property is one option. And there's three different designs for that. And the variability is really about the footprint and the height of the waste for each of these. There is an option, which is the smallest footprint, which is also the tallest. And there's an option, which is the lowest height, but also has the largest footprint. And then there's an option in the middle, with different costs and different amounts of area that would be not consumed by the new landfill, the new modern landfill that would be created on the property. This would involve lifting up all the waste and installing a liner underneath, and then all the other systems that go with a modern landfill. That's the first option. The second option is what we call dig and haul. This is moving all the waste to another landfill. It's as simple to say, but it's a lot of ways to move.
Okay, Dan?
Good question. In both scenarios, does all of the garbage have to be dug up and moved?
So, yes, the slide we have here is the options for, that we're considering. We did consider an option, which is called the no action option. We're required to consider that in part of the feasibility study. We've concluded that's not protective of human health and environment. So if you're asking, does something need to be done? I would say yes.
No, my question was, in both scenarios, option one and option two, does every piece of garbage have to be dislocated from its current position to be able to facilitate either dig and haul or dig and line?
For the dig and line, we would lift all the garbage with some exceptions. Now, the exceptions are, there's a few locations where there's a building on top of the waste. The transfer facility is built on the waste. And also, what we discovered in the investigation is not all the waste is actually on the property. So for both the dump and the landfill, it's extended beyond the property boundaries. At the dump, some of the waste is now under the mini storage building to the south. We would get as much of the waste we can, even though it's not on the property, and it would be lifted to install the liner, and the dig and haul would be hauled in their landfill. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, in both cases, all of the garbage that is currently underground on those properties has to be dug up and moved aside. If you're going to stick a liner down and put it back or move it someplace else, it all has to be physically dug out.
We can't just slide a liner underneath.
Correct. My point is, both require the same amount of digging. One is set it aside. The other is move it someplace else.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, Vince?
Is there any hesitation about the limestone underneath the garbage and the leakage that may have penetrated the rock?
You're asking me if there's contamination in the rock right now?
Yeah, beneath the garbage.
Part of the remedial, part of the investigation work was to test some core samples, crush and test the core samples of the rock. We didn't find things we were concerned about. And that would sort of make sense, that we know about how the water is transported. So in the dolomite story, it's transported through cracks and fissures in the rock. It doesn't sort of move through the mass of the rock. So if there was any impact of the rock, it would be limited to the area right around that little crack in the rock where the fluid is moving. So all this is sort of consistent with, the test results are consistent with our understanding of how things move, which leads to the conclusion that we're not finding things of concern in the rock right now. It's in the water more than it is in the rock. Does that answer your question? All right. So part of feasibility study also is coming up with cost estimates. One of the factors we use to evaluate and arrive at what the best option will be. Normally, in the Superfund process, really the goal is to land on one option, one feasibility study option, move forward with that one option. This is different. We're not trying to do that at all. What we're doing is we're holding open two possible options for legislature to make a funding decision. We'll talk about that later in the presentation. So this slide goes over the different options that are being considered and the costs, and also things that are related, which, for example, are potentially available acres on the property and the height of what the waste power would be. So first option, what we call dig and line, lifting, digging up all the waste, installing, creating a modern landfill. The three different options, smallest footprint, lowest height, and the balanced option. You can see there's variation in the footprint of the landfill on the property. There's also some variation in the area of the property that would not be consumed by the landfill, may potentially be available for different use. The heights are different, the costs are different. On the far right, there's a column that's titled additional costs for enhanced liner. So part of feasibility study is designing what the proposed liner would be. We're working on two different options. One is the standard landfill liner, which is really a two-layer liner. We're also going to propose for a funding decision, an enhanced liner, which would be a triple-layer liner. So there's an additional, the additional cost for the triple-layer liner is spelled out. So as you can see, there's a...
Dan?
How many landfills have a triple liner today in Minnesota? You know?
I don't know the total number. I know of one.
Yeah, there's a number of them. In the closed landfill program, the Washington County landfill was a similar thing, dug up, put on a triple liner. The additional liner protection would be if we find high levels of contaminants, which leads to a hazard substance being found. And what usually is there is then taken to a hazardous waste incinerator or landfill, which is outside the state. That's much more expensive. One option is to design similar containment systems in place, and that would be the additional level of liners.
So there's not been a final decision on the liner yet. This will be one of the things that's discussed at the public meeting. What we're doing is we're presenting different options.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So we're in the design process, which is called 30% design. It's still a very preliminary design. So these, all these numbers here are still subject to change, and they will change as we move forward in the design process. This primarily applies to the cost. We'll be going from a cost range down to one cost before it's bid. So the variability right now for the dig and line options are really about construction variability. This is because of the unknowns of the spot we are in the design. For the dig and haul options, the variability is the variability in construction costs, but also really two other things. This doesn't prescribe hauling to a specific landfill. So there's a low range and a high range. The low-range option is the low range of hauling to a different landfill, and also a waiving of all taxes and fees associated with movement of the waste.
Okay. Dan?
Can you explain where you got that low range? What went into the 145 to 235? It's, that 145 is significantly higher than any number I've seen before. But the 68 to 86 to 77, those actually are representative of numbers that we've seen and heard and discussed. But the 145 is a brand-new minimum, I guess. That's quite a bit higher than the previously discussed dig and haul minimum in that range. Can you tell us how you drive that 145?
It's an engineering cost estimate based on the scope, which is digging all the waste up. So there's a cost for transport off-site. There's a cost for excavation. There's a cost for transport off-site. There's a cost for all the fees and taxes. I can pull the sheet. That'd be helpful.
I mean, I do understand the high end, although I'm not sure how it gets to 795. That seems extraordinarily high. But I can certainly see where it gets to well over 100 if the county and the city were to choose to put the same host fees and other fees associated with that garbage going into a landfill, at least the one that we have. But if all of those, you know, so when you're building this range, right, if you say, all right, it's going to be anywhere from here, this is the best-case scenario, which everybody waives the fees, it's going to a very short distance, like the Burnsville Sanitary landfill, what does that cost look like, all the way up to having to pay the fees and/or haul it a long distance someplace else? So I get the high end. That makes sense. The low end doesn't make sense. It seems artificially high for a starting point.
Just real quick, at a higher level, the state has not pulled together an estimate before on the dig and haul. We did a back-of-the-envelope calculation of about 200 million. There is a third party that's put out an estimate that's closer to the 100 million, and they have estimated using options that would not necessarily be available to the state. For instance, using their own trucks or hauling over an overland route that the state, as they put through their, our engineering piece here can't use, because that would assume a certain person won the bid. We have to use smaller trucks on an overland route around the facility. And so there are some cost drivers there. There are, from that number that has been thrown around and quoted, it's not an apples-to-apples.
Gotcha. It's assuming some advantages and assumptions that that particular... It's assuming some advantages and assumptions that that particular bid source might have that others won't, right?
Correct.
And Kirk, Hansson, and Jenny, the 68 million to 110 million and the 77 million, these are having to do with the dig and line options that we've been talking about. It's only last year that we started to bring in the dig and haul option, and this is where you have to bring in new estimates. Am I correct? Because this is part of the conversation in some of the meetings that I've participated at the legislature about, the two different options.
Correct, Mayor. You're correct. We have not done the same level of detail on the estimates to dig and haul until this piece. So, now we really have the same rigor done for a dig and haul and a dig and line, where before, one was more rigorous and the other was more of a quick estimate.
And this is the money that we were going to the legislature to get, and I know under Governor Dayton, that was part of all of that conversation, to get the money through the legislature, through bonding for all of that, and it was about the dig and line. But now that we are looking and exploring the dig and haul, now we have to have new estimates on what that cost is going to be. I'm going to go to Dan G. and then to Kara.
So, I have two things. Is it safe to say that if this third party is correct, that it could be just as economical to do a dig and haul as it would be to dig a line then? Is that what I just heard?
Potentially. We have to truth that, and we're going to get a little bit in here into the process. We've built in the process for that to come out. So, I'm going to steal a little bit of Hans' thunder, but we're going to do a two-bid system.
Okay.
So, that folks can say, and if a third party can do it for cheaper, we will see that before going to the legislature. So, the legislature will have the most accurate numbers possible when making decisions. This is something that the team has been working on because of conversations with the legislature yourselves and other interested parties.
And part two was, when you're doing the costs of the lining this in place where it's at, basically, are you figuring in the cost, the lost economic development opportunities? When I look at our background, to move it offsite, we could have, see up to 730-some million dollars in development down there with a lot more taxes to expand our tax base as opposed to doing it, leaving it there, which is around $34 million in development. So, there's a cost to the city, the county, and the state as far as tax revenue goes and just the development for the city itself to make us economic viable here, so. And I think that should be kind of considered in what losses we may have in the future by doing it that way, because that is a cost to us, and whether we're here for it or not, my grandkids or great-grandkids are going to be here for it, and they're going to have to deal with it. That's more a statement probably than anything.
The real quick answer is no, it's not in there, but that's one of the multiple things that will have to come into the conversation at the legislature.
Thank you.
Okay, Kara?
And it sounds like you're going to be getting to the question that I was going to be asking, because it would be good to have that in there, because there's a big difference between an annual property tax coming in of 1 million versus 8 million. Like, that's per year. That's not an insignificant difference in that. So, when our state legislature has this information, that is important policy information for them to have, is that large of a difference?
They're going to get a lot of this background information as part of their education in terms of what's going on, and I believe, George, you're going to be doing the same kind of education for the commissioners?
Mayor, we are educating the commissioners.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Hans?
All right, so this is our path forward. We're at the first two squares in this path forward now, which is super fund feasibility study. We've arrived at the two different options, which is not the normal path for a feasibility study. We're to hold open two possible options moving forward. We're working now on the bottom liner design, and with those two things, with the two possible options and the bottom liner proposal for design, which is the standard liner option and also an enhanced liner option, we're going to proceed to a public meeting in April of 2020. The answer we want to get out of the public meeting process is narrow the dig and line options down to one option. So, right now, there's variability in height and footprint and available space on the property that would not be consumed by the landfill. We want to narrow down to one of the dig and line options and also one proposal for the liner, and it would either be the standard liner or an enhanced liner. And then we would move forward to bid out both those options. It's a dual bid process. We would ask for both options to be bid. We're working on cost estimates. They'll be the best cost estimates we have, and we won't really know the costs until we get the bids back, is the reality of the situation. So, with the bids in hand, we would go to the legislature, and there'd be a funding decision about, the legislature would fund one cleanup plan, and then we would proceed with the construction, depending on what is selected. This is either a three- or a four-year construction project.
And you're anticipating that this will be in 2021?
Yes. So, the detailed schedule in terms of dates is public meeting, April 2020, and then we go to the legislature in the 2021 session. That's the plan that we're working with right now.
So, you can see here on the schedule, that's okay. I'm just going to kind of take off from where you see the, we talked about the bid process, and the reason for these two bids is we've also had a closed landfill, WDE in Andover, where we went to the legislature, requested money with our typical feasibility, 100% design. Unfortunately, we went out for the bids, and it came in several million dollars more. We were put in a situation the following year, having to go to legislature and acquire that, those dollars. That's very fresh in the legislature's mind, and so this is very unique, where we would do a bid. Most time, bids are open for a short amount of time. We will have to make the request and let them know that we're going to keep them open for six months, so that the legislature can do their work, and then come back in, you know, end of May hopefully, or early June with an answer of what project they move forward, and then be able to move forward and not lose time. So, this, again, is a very unique process from how we have done this type of project in the past, and the same with how, in general, how the state has done its bidding, but we think it's going to provide a better outcome. And so, this is a slide that we also used with the legislature when we recently had a bonding committee come in and do a tour, and there really are three big questions going to the legislature. As Hans mentioned, ultimately, it will be the legislature deciding based on the level of funding on whether dig and haul or dig and line will move forward. And by having those bid documents in with true numbers, and if there are any potential savings from any one that can propose, any third party or that, we'll be able to see those there, and then the legislature gets the best understanding of what's there. The agency will not put forward anything that is not protective. As you can see, we've already pulled out the no-action possibility, and we will advocate for anything that is protective of the area. Now, the level of funding is not only the total project cost, but as Hans has mentioned, it also includes state and local fees. We anticipate, and we're working right now with the Department of Revenue on legislation that we're hopefully to bring forward this session, which would exempt any state taxes or fees from being applied to this process. Again, that same concept, so that when we go in in 2021 to the legislature, we have bid documents with the most recent amount of information. And we know that the state potential amounts could range in, you know, anywhere from 60 to 70 million dollars in taxes and fees, which could greatly reduce the cost of this. So, this is something we're working on with Department of Admin at this point, and we'll work with the governor's office to get his approval before moving on to the legislature. The second is the source of funding, and I know we've had this conversation before of general obligation bonds, taxable versus non-taxable bonds, and if they are non-taxable bonds, there is the 37-and-a-half-year restriction on ability to earn, and that's whether it's under a public entity or a private entity as we move forward. Any bonding, there does need to be a public interest in the property, whether it's an easement or actual fee title of the property. And so, that will be something that we'll continue to work with them on. We've had discussions with MMB on various types of bonds too, to start putting together a menu of options for the legislature, so that they can pick and choose and work on how that might be done. The third item is the financial benefits. Who's going to benefit for the cleanup and contribute to it? And that, going back to an earlier question of property tax values, the worth of the property moving forward, our mission and primary focus is protecting human health and the environment, and that is what we're going to advocate first and foremost for. And then additional things such as the ability for having the land be developed and those type of things will be other things that the legislature will consider. What we've already heard by going before the committee is that there's a question of those who benefit from the cleanup, are they going to contribute? And we've heard that in terms of the current landowner, but believe that's held true for no matter who owns the property, whether it's a local unit of government, private entity, whether it's the current one or any other one. And so, that question will come up, and that'll be a robust conversation. I think one of the things we want to tee up for you, and the same thing will be teeing up for the county, coming up in our conversation with them, while the state is not looking to move forward legislation and talk about local fees, it will be the first or second question up from the legislature. And so, that's something that you guys will have to discuss, and come this legislative session, I imagine the legislature would ask for your opinion on those fees, whether it's the county or local unit of government, the city's fees. But again, we're not looking to have that in our legislation. We're looking just to do the state piece, but that will be a question, and just want you to be ready for. And that falls kind of under the contribution of cleanup, in addition to how that moves forward with whoever owns the property in the future, if the state were to have to acquire the property to do the work and then sells it to another party or the current property owner. This is something that we've been having conversations with the legislature on already, concepts of windfall leans and the like, and that's something else we'll continue through those conversations. As the mayor mentioned, we are not going before the legislature this year for bonding. After conversations with various legislators and wanting some more certainty in terms of cost, and then also setting the stage, let's try to figure out this tax stuff and that, get that all figured out this year is the goal, and then bring a much clearer question before the legislature that can really focus them on it. And so, that's where it's a little bit of a change, since we had this conversation last time, where we're anticipation, even as late as this summer, we put in our initial request for bonding would be for this year for it. We want to make sure that as we look at it, we do the proper steps and put ourselves in the best place to be successful.
So, Kirk, can you also then speak to the transaction between one owner selling to another private owner? And then what does that mean with regard to bonding? If the buyer of the property is going to use the property for their business, and so, will there be any bonding money, or that's going to be part of the work that we need to get done in 2020, so it's teed up well for 2021?
So, the, if you're talking in terms of restrictions because of non-taxable bonds and that earning potential, whether it's the current owner or some future owner, those stay there. So, what really the piece is the funding source, that second bullet. It's where's the funding coming from to help try to relieve that piece? And so, that's what some of the things we're looking at. Taxable bonds allows for that to happen. I think that's one possibility, and we're trying to explore with MMB what other avenues are, and we've had the city and county in those conversations too.
And we need to also be clear, because if the new entity who is interested in this property, it's still going to be 37 years out, because they would like to use the land and also mine some of the rock that's there. So, it'll still be for the city of Burnsville to do any development on that site. It's still 30-some-plus years out, correct?
If the work is done and that person continues the ownership, that restriction, whether it's public or private, continues to take place.
Yeah. I just want everybody to understand, whether it's publicly owned with general obligation bonds, it's 37 years out. If it's privately owned and they're going to work the property and dig out the resources, the natural resources that they need for their business, it's still 30-plus years out before the city of Burnsville can do development on the site and gain the taxable property that we would like to see.
Correct. If they own the property at the time, the work's done, correct?
Okay, Dan G.
That's only under the general obligation bond restriction. That wouldn't be the case if it was taxable.
No.
Development can be done much sooner than that with a mining structure.
Well...
It isn't a 37, it isn't a 35 or a 40-year wait, just because they want to mine it. The only restriction on any development is because of the general obligation only. If a percentage of the funding can be done through cash and other sources or taxable bonds, there will be development within the first five years on part of that property.
On part of the property.
And another big chunk within 10 years. There will be no 35-and-a-half or 37-year wait.
Those are all pretty good things that we need to really understand in terms of moving forward, so that we are clear in terms of a path forward for what that's going to look like for us. And so, whether it's five years, I want to understand all of that. We don't have any of that. There's a lot of conversations, as we all have been sitting in those meetings, but clarity is something that we all need to make sure that we have it, and a lot of conversation needs to be codified.
I think the first step is getting more specific numbers. It's really going to help. The ranges right now are hard for planning.
Yeah. Any other questions for Kirk and Hansson? Dan G.
What question, you deal with the legislators more than we do. Does it help when the city or the county that says, "We will waive our fees," when you go to the legislators saying that, "We're ready to step up and do our share to make this happen"?
It will definitely, in terms of the cost overall going down.
Right.
In terms of whether or not it's, if there are two options and one costs more, it'll come into a number of factors. I don't know, it would help? Is it enough? That's a larger, larger question.
Thank you.
I think there's a lot of openness and still more discussion about all of that rather than jumping in. Dan K.
I just wanted to circle back on that comment that Councilmember Gossisson made. I mean, cost to clean up isn't the total cost over time. That, just for the city to go from 1 million to 8 million a year in property tax revenue when it's fully built out is a substantial difference. There's also a substantial difference that's magnified four, three, or four times to the county in property tax revenue, and there's also property tax revenue to the state. When this is presented, you know, let's fast forward, you get two bids, you define the dig and line, you got the dig and haul, it's gone out for bids, you now have hard numbers. Regardless of where they're at, let's assume that they're close, but they're still 8 or 10 million apart, is the, if I, as a legislator, am going to be presented this, and a local legislator asks to carry that bonding bill, am I going to see the forecasted revenue, tax revenue, over the next 40 years with this plan versus this plan? Or am I going to be shown, here's your cost to clean up, and it's 10 million different?
So, we are going to be going before legislature with a coalition, and that includes the city and county, and it'll likely be the county and city taking the lead on that portion to be able to present that package. We've worked as three parties, as a partnership of four, and we anticipate moving forward on that. But we just don't have that information. It's additional information that the city's easier to explain and sell than us. It's just not our daily job.
Okay. So, that'll be a part of the package that's presented, that will present, and the county present. You know, this option brings in future tax revenue over develop, you know, right? This package brings in this. Now, here's your front-end cost to get there, but here's the, here's the story over time, right?
And the legislators, the committee who came down and saw the vision from KMM, and so that will be part of the package when we go forward, because that'll give a projection of what the tax revenue might be out into the future. So, all of that would be part of the package. It comes from the private sector, from local government, from the county, and then, of course, the state has their piece of all of that. So, it is a collaboration of all of the stakeholders. Yeah.
One final comment. Mr. Kadelka, I appreciate your comments related to the approach that you have with getting the bids in to be able to package this up. I think it's, that's very, that's good news. It's helpful to ensure that both get their chance at being openly bid, to find out what the actual costs are going to be. And I think it's difficult to have this discussion without bringing up the status...
And I think it's difficult to have this discussion without bringing up the status of the Burnsville Sanitary Landfill and the CON process with a limited lifespan. I mean, if they, if they had several more years of capacity and there was no urgency, this may not be as a big a deal because we'd have time, right? Because they do have a finite timeline of permitted waste capacity. Dig and haul only makes sense for us to haul it to Burnsville Sanitary Landfill, not haul it all the way to Red Wing or to Iowa. Costs obviously significantly higher on those two. So can you speak tonight, and I don't want to put you on the spot to speak away from what you intended to, but can you speak of how you see the Burnsville Sanitary Landfill's desire to expand and how it can help or hurt this particular project?
Not a problem. So they're disconnected. Certificate of need is not needed for this project because the determination the agency has made and shared with, with others. Now, they would need, if it were to be Burnsville landfill, they would need to get a permit and additional permitted capacity and make sure it's done and built in a way that's protective human health and environment, just like any waste they would do. And they would need to get the county approval. But CON would not be used in this situation because we're moving from an existing landfill to a, an existing landfill. And it's not new waste. Certificate of need is when we're looking for new waste coming in from other locations and trash. So that, that, they, they still have to follow up through their environmental review and the permitting process, but it is not tied to CON.
So from a, a business discussion for Burnsville Sanitary Landfill to want to do that, obviously there needs to be some upside to it as opposed to, okay, we'll just take the 6.3 million cubic yards and then that'll be it, right? When we run out of permitted new waste, we run out and then we'll take that and then, then we're done. I can see why their perspective, they're, they're looking for greater capacity beyond just the six and a half or whatever it is, 6.3 cubic yards of, of transferred waste from freeway landfill, freeway dump, that they want something bigger. Speaking openly, so do we because obviously there's a, there's a host fee revenue stream that helps this city in a great way. And I, I mentioned this at our last meeting, you know, we have a landfill. It is what it is. And there's not going to be any high rises being developed right next to a landfill. And so we're missing out as a city on the potential development of some of that. It's obviously near a flood plain, so some of it can't be developed. But, so it's the but for test, right? But for property taxes, we're collecting host fees. And those, that host fee revenue needs to replicate what those property taxes could have been over time as best possible. And having that, that landfill end, when it, when it runs out of capacity essentially says that, you know, the, the property tax in lieu of faucet shuts off and that harms the city financially. So we have a vested interest in seeing that CON and having some additional to complete what is currently industrial waste, right? There's space there for industrial waste. There's many, 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 many years, many, many decades worth of space there. And it seems foolish to us to have that stay open for many, many more decades, taking in a small amount of industrial waste when it, we believe it should be just allowed to be converted to accepting solid municipal waste and continue to operate until a new capacity is set, right? Through the, through all the processes. Because that's our property tax revenue stream, really. I mean, it's but for all the development that might have happened down there, that's it. That's what we have to rely on.
Real quick, there are a couple of questions there. One is why would a landfill do this? You know, and I think they will need to look at the waste characterization and the material and feasibility study to make sure, to, to make sure that they, if there's anything else they need to do differently. But there is a financial benefit to them because they will be paid a tipping fee to bring the waste there. So they, they do get that benefit on why they would do it. The second piece on the overall certificate of need for the, the landfill, that's an ongoing process. We're right now on the supplemental environmental impact statement that's moving forward. We've got the scoping document done and now are doing the work with the waste management to finish that document. The other item is certificate of need and that is, has not opened yet. There is still the, the need to make sure the waste energy facilities are, are full in the, in the region here. That is something that the landfills can control and help. Our understanding is in October, they were full and we're monitoring to see if they are continuing to be full this month and next month. And so I think we have seen increased activities by some of the landfills to help make that doable and possible. And we're encouraged by that. Part of that is also the help of Dakota County and, and working to find a solution to this too, along with, I know we've been in conversations with them, waste energy facilities and landfill operators. And so there, we are seeing progress towards that on multiple fronts, on the environmental review and meaning of the capacity at waste energy facilities, which opens up the certificate of need process, CON.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Jenny?
So we're going to narrow it down from the state level to the city level. And Kirk and Hans have talked about a lot of things that I think I had in my section of this. But of course, covering the city priorities, they are environmental. We talked about the potential impacts to the water quality and getting things in a line facility. And then the redevelopment potential, the different scenarios that could be higher and better land use adding, you know, we are, we have this river in Burnsville, but people don't think of us as a river community. And you think about what that land use could be and how that can change kind of the type of community that we are and of course, the tax base. So we did do the numbers and you talked about them already. Thank you. You've read the report. I'm impressed. And so the valuation on the preferred option and, and what we did is we used the plan that KMM had previously submitted and ran, they gave us the square footages, acreages, potential land uses, ran those over to LRS to do their calculation, their financial analysis. That's how we got to these numbers. So $733 million in today's dollar would be the future value and total property taxes. It doesn't, it includes all taxing entities is $8 million per year.
And what is the projection on that development, Jenny?
The projection in value?
A projection of when the, when the product will go up so that you will, you will see the value of that product?
Well, it depends how it's financed, Matt Mayor, right? If it's, could be within the 10-year period, if it's non-37 and a half year limitations, privately financed, but probably not sooner than that.
Yeah.
And maybe much longer than that. And then on the dig and line, I just used the 40 acre, the option that will leave 40 acres of developable. That's a $34 million valuation of mostly office warehouse uses because it would be next to a landfill. And those property taxes are approximately $1 million.
And that's the 40 acres that's closer to the freeway?
Absolutely. And so when we did this analysis, it does become clear, as you've noted, there is a public payoff to getting this to dig and haul offsite. There's a huge public payoff. These are public dollars from our standpoint that are going into this from the state, potentially the city and the county with fees. This taxes, property taxes pays the public back, so to speak. So that's part of our case to make with the legislature as this goes forward.
Quick question. You've mentioned that 1 million, 1 million or all taxing, is that city, county, state?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We can email you the detail if you want that.
Just roughly, what's our share?
Yeah.
What's our crumbs?
You, you can't compare one to the other because the state does not collect property taxes on multifamily.
Right.
And a big part of the 733 million is multifamily development. So it's not apples to apples.
It's a bigger share of the 8 million would be the city's because it's multifamily where industrial office would be a bigger share potentially to the state because it's CI versus.
The 40 acres will have a lot, 33% of that goes to the state.
I can email you out to kind of the chart that has the breakdown. I just didn't include the details here. I'll email it. We have it ready. It's just.
Based on that presentation though, how can we not love the 733 at 8 million because we're getting a bigger share of the 8 million?
It's compelling.
Absolutely.
If it's, you think if it costs 160 million to clean up, that's payback in 20 years.
Yeah, that's not bad.
Right? That's today's dollars.
Yeah.
If it's 1 million per year and it's 100 million, that's 100 years.
Yeah.
Right? The cost to do that for development isn't there in the dig and line option as it is on the dig and haul.
Right. And if it's an $80 million cleanup, then you're talking 10 years.
Exactly. Exactly. So I, in looking at what the city's options are here, there's a continuum of, continuum of options for what we can do to participate. Certainly on the left, we've got low risk, low cost to the city. And that's if the MPCA continues down the path they are with cleaning up the land. They own the cleanup. They are the responsible entity along with the property owner right now. Two, something that we are much more engaged in, if the city were to step in and acquire the property, we own the cleanup, high risk, high cost to the city. Third party is somewhere in the middle, right? What can we do to help to get to that $733 million of investment at minimal risk possible to the city? So I put together kind of some options, our, our pathways as the city to get to the preferred option. And we've kind of talked through some of them today, but it seems, I think, obvious that we should be prepared to bring some financial tools to the table at some point or another in this. If it's not host fees, it may be something else to help cover some of the costs if there is a difference in costs. Once those bids come in, we'll know for sure what that difference is, but it's, it's, I think we should, it would be safe to assume that we are going to be asked to put in as a benefiting party, what are you putting into this mix? We certainly can work with the property owner to facilitate them entering into a binding agreement. A few years ago, we were, we had, kind of came up with a conceptual agreement where the city would assess the property. We were going to put in some money, some TIF money and some landfill money that we had along with the county to help write down the cost of the land for the MPCA to buy the land from the owner. And then we were, would assess the property back. So we could do something like that or try to do something like that again.
Yeah. Danji?
Isn't this all part of the MRQ TIF district already or?
No. This property is excluded.
Excluded from that, okay.
Specifically excluded.
This isn't part of that TIF.
Okay.
This was, the, the legislature was very clear that the landfill is not part of it and the quarry.
Good question.
Thank you.
Number three, certainly we can continue to work with a third party to facilitate cleanup and development. Of course, if it's done voluntarily, it's done through what's called a binding agreement with the MPCA. And certainly there would be those funding gaps, I think, for us to get to the preferred option. There's also working through the voluntary cleanup part, process. Now that would be the property owner or a third party taking on the funding of cleaning it up themselves, right? And then, you know, getting their payback on some end with the development or something like that. So that would be completely brownfield outside of the state's land, closed landfill program. I mean, depending on how legislation goes, DED has a, a brownfields program as well if that's the way it goes with development at the end of it. Hans and Kirk talked about their process. This is atypical for their process to go through this two bid option. So we can't thank them enough for working with us until this point to get to that. But there are other state agencies that deal with brownfield cleanup and kind of the way that we're talking about. So there's different kind of layers of regulations that kind of could help us get to the end. But right now it is part of the closed landfill cleanup program and falls under their purview. And then lastly, we could, as an EDA, we, we're not listed as a responsible party, but we could get into the chain of title and work with the property owner to acquire the property and then enter into that binding agreement ourselves. Of course, there, it doesn't come without risk or expense, which are unknown, but I just wanted to lay that out there so you know about this range of options that we have to, to consider. So the challenges of, as we have heard, the actual costs are unknown. And that's what makes this a real challenge at this point. You know, how much is the city going to be asked to put in? How much do we want to put in? Where is that number? Same thing for the county. So once the bids come out and we know what those costs are, I think that'll be a lot easier for us to have something to, to deal with because it's, we just don't know what it is right now. And the land acquisition costs, I think, are unknown at this point. So what is, how does that piece come to play in, into all of this? We do have the numbers that the MPCA went through from their feasibility report. We believe that special legislation is likely. We've already kind of talked about some of the things that are going to be asked. And we do and have been working very cooperatively with them. So we're more than happy to, to go down as a group to help get to the end in this preferred option as much as we can. That's just the win-win for everybody in this.
Agreed.
And certainly host fees, waiving of the host fees help bring the cost down, which we already know about that. So I do want to spend a little bit of time talking about the host fees and just get some assurance, I think, from you as a group in some way, shape or form on this. We have verbally agreed to waive our host fees on this. We don't have anything in writing. I think at the end of the day, I think Kirk mentioned it, the legislature is going to ask for a commitment from the city on this. And so I thought the easiest way to do that would be to amend our resolution supporting the close, the closure freeway landfill that was adopted last year. So, and I put the dollar amount on there now that we know some more of the cubic yards of garbage. So our contribution in choosing to waive those is about $26 million. The county is not taking a formal position. George mentioned that they'll be having those discussions. They estimate their fees to be $60 million. Am I in the ballpark, right, George? 60 million?
Yes.
Okay. So our next steps, and Hans talked about this, 60% design in March, they'll have a public meeting. Now, after hearing what he said today, I think we'll want to regroup and see if you have a preferred option to, from the city's standpoint for that April meeting on dig and line. If you have a preferred option, we probably should talk about that. And then with the complete design in September, going out for bids and then bonding, bonding financing 2021. And then this question has come up, I just want to make sure that you have this information, that there's no permits that are needed by the city for the MPCA to do its remediation project, right? So the state authority supersedes city in this case. But certainly the, something may come before you for PUD to increase the capacity at the landfill. They have concept stage, not development stage. So once they get their CON and get through their environmental reviews, they'll be back before you for development stage. And then of course, any land use clearance on future development would need your approval at some point. So my questions for you is if there's any other additional information you need or would like at this time, certainly we'll get you that, that chart with all the taxes. Are you still supportive of us working towards the preferred option with the third party? Just want to check in in case something's changed. Are you open to amending the resolution to include waiving the host fees at this time? Do you want to take any formal action to advocate the county to waive their fees? Do you want to weigh in and have discussions with them? Or are there any other ideas you'd like us to explore?
One of the things that I'd like to see is that, that we continue the discussion with the county so that they're a, a partner in all of this. And staff already knows that we have consensus to waive the fees, but I don't think that we should jump and, and amend the resolution because staff already has clear direction from us that that is a tool that they can work with and negotiate. But then we need to get the state to be a partner. We need to get the county to be a partner as we move forward. We have, we can, by the time we go to the legislature in 2021, make that decision for an additional piece. But I think for us to do that now without the county being a partner with us in waiving those fees, we stand alone. And I would suggest to my colleagues that we, because it's, the minutes that we have and this discussion that's on television allows our staff to move forward, that there is consensus to waive those fees, but we don't have to do a resolution at this point. That's my thought. And I think there's a lot of work yet to be done. And I think our staff needs, I mean, we all have consensus to say, staff, this is what you're, you can have this too, that we have consensus. But to put it at a resolution at this time, I think is premature till we get the state and the, and the county to come along with us.
Doesn't it show support for dig and haul if we put it in our resolution?
They know that we, we prefer dig and haul.
Well, I, I think we need to strengthen that position by putting it in a resolution because I think, for me, there is only one option. Dig and line is not even, it's dead on arrival in my mind.
It's the fees.
I get it.
The dig and haul is, we, we agree that that's the option that we all support.
And that we're waiving the fees to put it in.
But I would like the county to be a partner. And I would also like the state to understand that, but we also have it on record, but we don't have to do a resolution at this point. Yeah.
I've kind of gone back and forth on this a bit today, but at the end, end of the day, we need to get the trash off of our aquifer. That's our number one priority. We need to work with our partners, which is the county and the state to make this happen. And I don't think we need to just go for a windfall because in my mind, this is garbage that sits in Burnsville. It's, we're moving to a safer location in Burnsville. And why should anybody get a fee out of it as far as any government agency? And why should anybody get a fee out of it as far as any government agency?
Agreed.
And, yeah, I understand what you're saying, Madam Mayor, that we want the county to be with us and we want the state to be with us, but someone's got to lead. Someone's got to step up and say, we're there, so come with us and let's make this thing happen. And we got to make this happen. It's, we have no choice.
Yeah, and I think we've done that in the discussion last year. And we gave staff that. And we have, and the discussion now, we agree that Dig and Hall is the preferred option. We also said that we would waive our fees and that is a negotiating tool for our staff to have. But I'd like to see the county step in also. We're leading, we're doing that. Staff is asking for a resolution.
So I would like us to do that, the resolution. But I'd also like us to take action to advocate that the county waive their fee and we, some sort of formal action and send it to the county so they can start discussing this and getting it on their agenda and talking about it. I know the staff at counties talks with the board a lot, but it would be very, very good if the city that actually hosts this dump steps forward and says, come on, we're here with you. We're going to go hand in hand and make this happen.
Agreed.
I tend to agree with Madam Mayor that we have time. And I'd like to get some more reassurances from our partners that they're committed to waiving. And we've heard, heard some things, but I'm comfortable waiting this process out a little bit longer to get some more reassurances from.
I think we've said to the county, we're, we want you to be our partner.
I think there is an illusion that we have a lot of time. And I don't think we do because this process is underway. The earlier you affect the process, the more likely you are to get an outcome that you wish to have happen. Once the gears of bureaucracy start churning, you are not going to get in, like, you don't have a chance to affect it at that point. So I think the, the idea that we have time is an illusion. I think things generally get decided earlier than the dates of a process say happens. Absolutely, I do want to take formal action to advocate that the county waive their fees. The, all that, all that is doing is just saying, we are publicly asking you to do this, will you do this? Instead of doing the wink, wink, nudge, nudge, would you kind of like to say that? This just puts our cards on the table and asks them to, to do the same and just have the conversation. I don't think it's, you know, when they say, oh, take formal action, that's not like a forceful thing. We're just saying, okay, we're making this request of you, would you do it? I'm also in favor of revising our resolution to include waiving the city host fees. I think that, that lends strength to the depth of our, of our preference. Not just that we have a preference, but like, this is where we're planting our flag.
Okay, staff, you hear three to two to move forward with the resolution.
Correct, Madam Mayor. And then also three to two to get something to the county, a letter to the county.
Oh, I think there's consensus to get something to the county.
Right.
That's not, that's not the, that's, no, the three, two is the resolution.
You're right, you're right.
That's all that is because there is consensus that we're going to have, we all have Dig and Hall. And there is consensus that we will waive our fees. It's, you know, do we do it tonight or do we do it in October of 2020 before we go before the, the legislature in 2021? So for me, we have time to have that conversation. This meeting on television in minutes says that we are, we're, we're all in favor of waiving our fees, but we're not going to do a resolution just yet. But you have three members of the council who said, go ahead with the resolution. But everything else, there is consensus.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my, I guess my question is, is, should, do you want to include in that resolution that we are advocating that the county also waive their fees? Do you want that as a statement in the resolution as a separate letter?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Not only that, we also, I would say that we also ask the state to come in as a partner because this is not just for the city of Burnsville when we're looking at protecting the water table. It's for the region. The Jordan Aquifer just doesn't serve just Burnsville. It serves a lot, a lot bigger footprint, a lot of other cities. So that's where I look at, it's the health and safety and welfare of the people. But, you know, I want people to be a partner. Okay.
I think on a, potentially is, was small, although 80 million is not small. To add 60 million on top of it is basically a deal, a deal killer. And I believe our, our commissioner has already expressed that opinion. And I can't imagine anyone on the Dakota County Commission that would think it wouldn't be a deal killer. So I think it's, it's, I think we're, I think we're making the right decision by just putting it in our resolution because it's almost a foregone conclusion. I mean, the cat's out of the bag. They know these numbers and they know their number is 60 million. And they know that if they throw that on there, it's basically going to kill the deal. So I, I feel, that's why I'm very confident that we do what we just decided to do. And I think it's the right thing to do.
Has this presentation been before the county board?
I don't think so, George.
Madam Mayor, it is not.
Yeah, I don't think so.
The same presentation or similar one with Mr. Kadelka, January or February.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, I don't need an exact list, but I mean, we've been at the city level highly engaged in this process. I think the county has been engaged, but maybe not quite to the extent that the city has been up to this point. I, I mean, we haven't heard any formal reassurances from the county board about their outlook on this up to this point.
The board has not been educated on this. And the board needs to also see the KMM proposal and what that looks like. So because that's where the projections are being made in terms of the tax base.
Madam Mayor, we did share the KMM proposal with them. However, the county board has not taken any official position on the, on the options as of yet. So we hope to get to that in.
Okay. All right. Jenny, is there anything else that Melanie and Jenny, you need from us?
No.
Okay, Ms. McGowan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members, for this opportunity. There were some things said this evening that I must respond to, and I have another option to suggest to the council. Mr. Kadelka suggested that there be a robust conversation. Freeway Landfill would be happy to have a honest, truthful, robust conversation about the facts related to Freeway Landfill and the old Freeway Landfill. One of the things that people must keep in mind is, under these circumstances, Freeway Landfill must relinquish control of the property. For people to believe that somehow Freeway Landfill will retain ownership of it is something that is not a possibility. There was litigation initiated by the MPCA in the early 1990s, which resulted in Freeway Landfill and all of its customers turning over insurance proceeds and the insurance that the state of Minnesota collected millions of dollars on. So just for people to be aware that this is an attempt by the MPCA, it sounds, to take a second bite from the apple. Something else that is very important is that the natural flow of the groundwater beneath Freeway Landfill was up and toward the river. But Kramer Mining lowered their quarry sump, which Freeway Landfill notified the MPCA of. And in fact, Kramer Mining reversed the groundwater flow from up and toward the river to down and into the quarry. After Freeway Landfill closed in 1990, the city then began taking water, as all of you are aware, from that water in the quarry. In order for the MPCA to find chemicals in the water, they took the unprecedented step of putting wells in the garbage. So for the last few years, the MPCA has been testing water in the landfill. Mr. Nevy said, and I quote, that there's risk to human health. In fact, the MPCA has no evidence that there is contamination or pollution off the site of the Freeway Landfill. And they have been aware of this for 30 or 40 years. Mr. Nevy also said that once Kramer ceases dewatering, which Mr. Ravisto has said from Kramer Mining, that that will be an additional 30 to 35 years from now because they believe that they have additional capacity regardless of whether they expand their mining operation or not. Mr. Nevy suggested that they're in the feasibility process. Freeway Landfill was required to do a remedial investigation in the mid 1980s and in fact, did two at the request of the MPCA, which done by two different independent engineers showed that Freeway Landfill was not a risk to human health or the environment. Despite the fact that Freeway Landfill did two remedial investigations and as a part of that process, the feasibility studies suggested that nothing be done because of no risk to human health and the environment. Mr. Nevy also intimated that there was waste off the property. That is not true. He also suggested that there was waste under the mini storage. That is true because Astle Ford had a landfill underneath the mini storage and the car dealership at the same time that the old Freeway Landfill was operating. For some reason, the MPCA wants to ignore the fact that there was another landfill immediately adjacent to the old Freeway Landfill. Mr. Nevy also said that they didn't find chemicals of concern in the rock, which is fascinating to me because if, in fact, all of the water from Freeway Landfill that now percolates through it and goes down into the groundwater, which is allegedly their concern, it has to go somewhere and it has to go through the rock. So either there is a problem or there isn't a problem. The MPCA, in order to put Freeway Landfill at the top of the list, has falsified, misled and ignored the facts. The MPCA is attempting to double tax waste that has already been taxed. At one point in time, Freeway Landfill paid tax on the waste that was going into the landfill. And I want to make very clear, Freeway Landfill was owned and operated by my dad. At no point did I ever own or operate the landfill. And the ownership of the landfill has not changed in over 20 years. There was a waste energy facility, which Mr. Kadelka suggested earlier that they be reaching capacity, that failed in Elk River. There is a need for additional waste capacity. So one of my options is this. Why not expand the Freeway Landfill? Freeway Landfill asked for an expansion in the 1980s and was turned down. If Freeway Landfill were expanded, we would have the same ability to put the same cap liner that Burnsville Landfill and Mr. Kadelka has suggested that they have. In addition to that, the conditions upon the expansion of the landfill would be that Freeway Landfill would be able to address the concerns of the MPCA. So I welcome any of your questions, have always welcomed any of your questions. And I appreciate this opportunity and thank you.
Thank you. Yes, stay, there's a question, Mike. Okay, Kara.
So, so that I understand it correctly, in your proposal to reopen the landfill and be able to take additional waste onto the landfill, are you saying that you will agree to remove the waste, line it, put the waste back in, and then new waste could join that as well? Did I understand that correctly?
No. We would do exactly the same thing that Burnsville Landfill has done. And they did not remove the waste and put a liner under that waste. Burnsville Landfill opened before either of the two Freeway Landfills. But we would be willing to put a cap liner once completed.
Vince?
I, I struggle with this piece of history, Mike and whoever else can contribute. But when the, the amphitheater plan was on the table, were these same concerns being discussed at that time with the land?
Which concerns?
The toxic garbage.
Well, Madam Mayor?
I'm just asking for perspective.
We're going back 25 or 30 years at least.
No, the amphitheater was not 25 or 30 years ago. The amphitheater was about, yeah, 18 years ago when that application by the Minnesota Wild was put on the table for the amphitheater.
But to address your question, the MPCA has been aware since the landfill closed in 1990, since the remedial investigation was done in the mid 80s. And there has been quarterly monitoring done since the late 70s or early 80s. There was an agreement that was reached with the MPCA to close the landfill as part of the amphitheater development.
Yeah. Can I answer your question? The reason why the issues, and, and Kirk can also, I think Kirk might have been at the MPCA, the amphitheater was going to be in the area of your quarry that was the, that had 30,000 foot. Where the landfill is now is going to just be a parking lot, but not asphalted. It was just going to be gravel, so it wasn't going to. So cars can come in, park, but the amphitheater was going to be down in the line quarry that you now have storage. You, you use it for storage.
For recycling concrete.
Yeah, yeah. So that's where, I think, Kirk, I don't know if you, because it wasn't, there wasn't going to be a building on it and it wasn't going to be asphalted. It was just only going to be gravel and cars were going to be parked on it. So Kirk, from the MPCA's perspective, as we move forward with the amphitheater, so that's the reason why some of that, because there wasn't going to be any impact on it.
With that statement, you're saying the garbage would just sit there and there'd be gravel over the top and it would be a big parking lot, but the landfill was not going to be remedied.
And so Kirk, you want to?
Madam Mayor, I have a little bit of information in history on it. The agency has been working through that or other opportunities to find a way to make sure the landfill is protective of human health and the environment. And under that plan, there would have to be put in there engineering to make sure that it was handled in the proper way. Now, that was, in some of the earlier studies mentioned, were done where there was different understanding of contamination. Health standards have changed, they've become more stringent. Or new chemicals have been found, such as PFAS, one four dioxin, which has led to an evolving understanding of the potential risk of the landfill. And thus, where previously, certain things may have been allowed, today they would not. And this is not only for this landfill, this is for others too, including those under the state's care. And these are the example of the Washington County landfill in the closed landfill program already. Previously, it did have one system, like, cover in place in the liner. But because of additional understanding and growing knowledge of the contamination and the potential risk it, it had to human health and the environment, that was dug up and put on a liner. So these things do evolve over time and explains why certain things 30 years ago, when some of these first studies were done, may have had different conclusions than today.
Okay. Vince?
I'm not trying to be a devil's advocate or anything, but with the Burnsville sanitary landfill next door, I think we have a couple spots that are capped and not lined. And as our technology and understanding evolves, as you stated, you know, we find more hazards that we didn't know about maybe 20 years ago. Are those things that we need to be concerned about at that location? Or, you know, even with this location in the bedrock, where we don't maybe visibly see? with this location in the bedrock where we don't maybe visibly see something, but it exists and we're not aware of it?
You're talking about the waste management facility?
Yeah, I mean, both. I mean, it's just if, if something's there that now that we don't know about, but with technology in forty years, I mean, you don't want to live in fear, but it's apparently proven that that is.
Protecting the water source.
Yeah.
Mayor and council members, it is a good point that Mr. McGowan has brought up and is something that the agency is looking at. In the supplemental environmental impact statement, if you go through the scoping document, there's a large amount looking at what is the true depth of the waste at the Burnsville underlying facility. There are some cells that are aligned, but there are numerous ones that are lined and up to modern landfill standards. And so that analysis will be done as part of the environmental impact statement, looking at, you know, what would the potential groundwater and how does that interact with the waste under the scenario where Kramer Quarry stops pumping? So that similar analysis has looked to be done for Burnsville's waste management facility so that they, the Freeway facilities and the Burnsville facilities would look under the same, look under, look at the same things to make sure we have both of them taken care. We don't want one taken care of and then have the other one creating problems with the drinking water.
And that was a good question because that allows us to address the allegations that Mr. McGowan made and then confirmed by Mr. Kadelka. So we'll move forward and there'll be more information that we will get to make better decisions as we move forward. Dan?
Mr. Kadelka, while you're at the table, I appreciate you coming back and Mike being here. Mike McGowan has brought up some other similar situations to that portion of Burnsville sanitary landfill that predated lining requirements, so maybe one day it'll have to be remediated itself. The storage facility, Astleford's property that has garbage under it, and then the dealership that is adjacent to the Freeway dump, how are those going to be addressed, tested? Because I, I mean, I understand Mr. McGowan's position of, right, if you're going to hold me to these rules and hold everybody else with unlined garbage to the same rules, how will those other locations be addressed?
Mayor and council members, each facility is different and has its differences. For instance, this Freeway landfill is much closer to the river and drinking water than others. There's difference in the amount of waste or waste may be collected. And so that's something we will look at as we move forward to on the characterizations. There is a dump that was located there that we understood was in the fifties and sixties potentially operating. I would have to check back, most developments when they do are done, they do come through our voluntary investigation cleanup program, VIC, and there is a level review done at that time. And so if there is something that's different because of any understanding, those will be tackled at future dates.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
The Astleford landfill was run at the same time that my dad operated the old Freeway landfill on the east side of the freeway in the early, mid-sixties, late sixties. And that landfill was much closer to the city wells than the old Freeway landfill.
I think these are a lot of investigative work that needs to be done, that needs to come back to us in terms of information for us to make good decisions on moving forward. There's a lot of work yet to be done and we need all of that kind of information. Dan K.
Well, I, I'm curious if there's any other landfills in Burnsville. It seems like the entire riverfront has some sort of spot in front of it.
There weren't any regulations back then.
Yeah. The dealership that you mentioned, Mr. McGowan, is that, is that the one next to the all-state storage?
Yes.
Is all-state storage on top of landfill?
Yes.
And the, that was new seven or eight, ten years ago dealership is actually built on top of?
So one of my allegations that Mr. Nevy suggested that waste has been disposed of or migrated off the property boundary, that is not Freeway landfill's waste.
So we have lots of work.
We have a lot of waste.
As I said, there's a lot of work and so I thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
And speaking. And Kirk, thank you so much, you and Hans for being here and giving us more information. And I just see more information coming so that we make good decisions for the people of Burnsville whom we work for and serve. Okay. And Jenny, and Melanie, you have your direction and so the resolution will come before us on a consent agenda. Okay? Anything else? Okay. The next item, Jenny, I believe this is also yours. This is the proactive maintenance discussion.
Madam Mayor and Council, while Jenny's queuing it up, thank you. I just wanted to circle back. This came up a couple weeks ago when we were talking about the budget. There was a question, I had brought forward some staffing recommendations for the 2020 budget, and then there was a question about some of our operational approaches to proactive code enforcement. So looking forward to some, what I asked Jenny to put together tonight was kind of a look back, how did, how did we get to where we are today? And then hopefully we can get some council direction about what does code enforcement look like for the council? So with that, I'll turn it over to Jenny.
Thank you, Melanie. She highlighted the background of kind of why we're here today. It's a continuation of your budget discussion on the CIP a couple weeks ago. This had been on the all-day work session for January, so you asked that that discussion be moved up to tonight, so that's why we're having that, to address some of your questions about FTEs that are requested in the inspections area and any relationship to your direction or future discussion to be had now on proactive code enforcement. So to give you a little bit of history, and I'm going to try to summarize all the information that was in the background, and there was a lot in there because there is a lot of history and it's a lofty topic. I mean, this is, this is, this was taken with a heavy heart, I think, back in 2012 when the council, council was grappling with this and what to do, and probably you have some similar feelings today when you think about this. So prior to that discussion in 2012, the way the city operated was we were on a complaint base for property maintenance complaints, and then we also did sweeps of certain areas. There were certain maybe parts of town that looking like they had a lot more violations than others. If we got a complaint in one area, you know, we usually kind of do the whole block because the next door neighbor will say, well, what about this one or what about that one? So it kind of creates its efficiency to kind of, kind of get them all in one area. And so there were parts of proactive code enforcement that were automatically built into our complaint-based system, looking at same and similar. So at the time, we had one to two FTEs dedicated to code enforcement. So there's always one FTE and then there was like a full-time seasonal position that we had had. And at the time, we also had five volunteers that helped us out from time to time doing things like signs and basic re-inspections. And then in the recession, we eliminated one of those positions. The full-time seasonal position was eliminated. So our proactive initiative then was adopted in 2012. It was, it's supported in the council's ends and outcomes and looking back at the backgrounds, the rationale was that the council wanted to bring back this position that was cut. They saw value in code enforcement and also to prevent properties from falling to significant states of violation. At that time, we had an apartment building that had gone into somewhat of a state of disrepair, and that was the, the challenge that council was put in. Do we post, it was posted as uninhabitable because of its management or lack thereof? And people were, were dislocated from their homes and the council was put in the position of, do you let people continue to live in squalor conditions or do you shut down the building and have them be relocated because people deserve better for the rent that they're paying? I mean, it really was a tough, tough decision for this council to make.
Especially when people came to the council and they were sick.
Yes.
And it had a direct implication on their health.
Yes. I remember those now that you say that, so.
The pictures told us a thousand stories. I mean, it was horrible.
Our inspectors falling through a floor either.
Yes. It was, it was a tough, tough decision. So with that, the city implemented, we already had a rental license program, but it was voluntary up until that point, so we instituted regular inspections. We go through every unit every three years. We engaged the Minnesota Multi-Housing Association and other groups of interest as part of that discussion. And then it wasn't, I don't think it was at the same meeting, but it was on a similar track about the same time. Council talked about proactive code enforcement and also canvassing the city every three years for code violations. And so as part of the proactive code enforcement program, one FTE was hired and we were given direction to look at violations as viewed from, from the street only. It was systematic. We kind of had, we had a map, a geographic location picked out and it was on the website so people know where we were going to be in any quarter of any year.
Open and transparent.
Yeah, well, there was a lot of education that was done on the front end. So we've had some changes to the program since it's been instituted, so we have, and some, these are, these are all good things too, as we've worked through kind of the growing pains of this program. And, and one of the things we've done is implemented a clear appeals process. We had someone go through our appeals process two months ago and it was seamless and it worked out great and they were heard by a non-biased third party, a mediator of sorts. And so we didn't have that before 2012, those processes in place. We've adopted an administrative citation process to keep things out of district court. You know, when cities issue these citations, they go on, on people's records, right? Well, that's not really where we want to end up for property maintenance violations. So the administrative citation process helps us with that. We adopted the 2015 International Property Maintenance Code. This is a standard health, safety code. More than forty states use that. Our previous property maintenance code had been loosely based on that, so a lot of the codes were similar. We have a policy that this council has adopted that speaks to prioritization of our violations, timing for compliance timelines, repeat within a certain period of time, how we're going to treat those. We've had some efficiencies in staffing. So one of the things you ask us to do every year when we look at our budget is where are these efficiencies? And we talk to you about that. And one of the things we learned since we started this program is having people compartmentalize to just rental or just code or just proactive isn't very efficient. And so our inspectors were kind of combined into all-in-one, so they do all three things, code enforcement, rental license, and some of the proactive, I should say. And they're given geographical areas of the city, so they really get to know the multifamily properties and the single-family neighborhoods when they're dealing with code enforcement. And then another thing, because we have kind of a little staffing group of experts in process, this division has become the clearinghouse for all other departments that are dealing with code issues. So if we have a sewer issue, they go to our code enforcement folks, what's our process for this? Because these things need to, we want them to be consistent and we want people to be treated fairly. If someone did work without a grading permit, what does that look like? So we don't have folks in engineering off doing their own process. It all kind of goes through this department, so it's kind of the same timeline, the same letters, the same appeals process. So it's really been beneficial to the city from that standpoint. And then other changes we've made, as you know, a lot of ordinance changes along the way and it speaks to what we enforce. Now, take a breath now.
That was impressive.
Was it? So I wanted to highlight some of the staffing changes. There's been some questions about what is the staffing and how many staff do we have? In 2013, when we started this division, we had 5.5 FTEs, right? And so you can see them on the left. We had the existing code enforcement inspector and then we added all the other positions and then the staff. At that time noted five volunteers that we had. Where we're at now with some of the efficiencies that we have created, we're at half an FTE more because the business licensing component was moved out of the police department up into this division because there's a lot of crossover with the enforcement piece with the compliance checks and process. And then also, we were having trouble with the half FTE rental license inspector that was turning over on a regular basis. So council at the time had asked that we use consultants where we can, and so this was an opportunity where we thought, well, let's try a consultant in that position. So we have a consultant helping us halftime with that. And we're down to do two volunteers that are helping us now instead of the five. Yes, Vince?
Vince?
Oh, excuse me, sorry.
All right. So in 2012, we had one to two full-time employees and now we're at six. So is that just a gradual increase since 2012 or did that kind of moonshot at once?
Councilmen, working with the direction to inspect rental license programs, this new division was created.
Yeah.
So this was, yes, so, so we added one, two, three, four and a half people at one time.
Okay.
And the rental license sort of ballooned in our city after the recession. A lot of people put their single-family homes into becoming rental property and that created a lot of issues. Matter of fact, two days ago, Jenny and I are trying to work with one of our residents in the Nob Hill area who has been frustrated.
So there hasn't been any gradual increase. If anything, it's been a shift from a half FTE from police to this, to this division and then decrease by going to a consultant helping us out halftime.
Okay. Dan?
That just reminded me as I was talking with city manager Lee this morning, I thought it was one and a half or something. I didn't realize it was four full-time equivalents that were brought on in 2013 after we made the decision in 2012 or whatever the timeline was to create this deeper resource division to take on all the inspections and the proactivity, et cetera. Thank you.
Dan G.
Has there been a decrease or increase in rental housing?
Well, I'll, I have some information on that. We have about seventy-six hundred multifamily units right now, seventy-six.
I'm talking about the, the homes that.
The single families.
Because a lot of the single families, we, at one point, I know we had like almost a thousand of them.
We do, right about that right now. I think we were up to maybe twelve hundred, but.
So we have an increase in that.
Yes, yes. So what does this division do? I thought it might be helpful just to share with you and maybe those watching what they do. So code enforcement, the way we look at it or your, our staff looks at it, it's preventative maintenance of property. We do a lot of other preventative maintenance with our roads, with our utilities, flushing of the hydrants is one, storm sewer clean-out, clean-out of ponds, that's all preventative maintenance. And so this is a program that gets to preventative maintenance of property. The IPMC is based on life safety issues. It's very, it's a companion, I would say, code to the building code, right? So it really is based on life safety issues. And then we have Burnsville codes, which we have some of our nuisance codes, right? And so those would be things like our outdoor storage, our screening issues, those things get more to quality of life, right? Hours of operation for businesses, I think it's seven to ten quiet hours, those kinds of things. And then we spend a lot of time, this division spends a lot of time educating the public as noted in the background. Most people don't know when they violate the ordinance that they're violating the ordinance, right? So it's a lot of education on those life safety and what our nuisance codes are. So the rental inspections, because we have so many of them, do make up about two-thirds of the time of what this division is doing. We have aging housing stock. Most of our units, as you know, are well over thirty years old and the majority of our apartments do not have sprinkler systems in them. And there's an article today about the city of Roseville canceling, withdrawing a rental license on an apartment. And one of the things they talked about was complete lack of carbon CO and smoke detectors in units that made it unsafe for people in addition to the varmint and all that kind of stuff. So, but those are things that when we do rental license inspections, when we're in the units, we're able to check to make sure smoke detectors are working on a regular basis, at least when we're there. And then this, on the rentals inspection side, because a lot of this work was handled in the police department before this division was created, we help them with the strike letters. So when they get, we have a program that deals with strikes with tenants and so this division helps deal with the paperwork and the process part of that. And then we have a resource for tenants that we did not have before. A lot of times the tenants had issues, they would call us and there really wasn't much we could do because the license program was voluntary. So there was nothing for the city to work with, with the landlord who wasn't maybe managing their property.
Could you explain what the strikes clauses are?
We've had, I want to say about over fifteen years, a three-strikes-and-you're-out program for rental license programs, so that's the best.
That's the STAR program that we had.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's the STAR program, Safer Tenants and Rental, I think is what stands for.
Yeah, it's the STAR program and then you get removed from this.
What kind of activity would get you a strike?
Councilmember Gustafson, I'm not as, I'm not familiar with that. I can get you some more information on what that is. Okay.
And Jenny, was that related to the property owners or the tenants?
I can get you that information. I believe it goes, both are copied on it and.
The violation was, how do I say this? The violation was done by the property owner or the tenants or both?
The tenants.
Just the tenants?
Madam Mayor and Council, I learned a little bit about this program when I did a ride-along earlier this year and Captain Smith was sharing with me a little bit about what the goals are and also Sergeant Zerwas talked with me a little bit about it. And the intent is to have, you know, it's not to.
Be punitive.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's not to necessarily be punitive, it's just to help.
Be a resource so neighbors are good neighbors with each other and if we've got issues that are compromising perhaps the safety of their neighbors, there's a, there's a mechanism in place. Ultimately, the goal is to. Ultimately, the goal is to, um, help, um, individuals.
Live in harmony, um, and just be a resource for that. But we can certainly get some more information in your hands.
Donna in the back there is, uh, nodding her head because she was part of that whole process also back then. And she's staying engaged with this whole thing.
So, um, what else this division does? They also do the proactive and complaint-based property maintenance or code enforcement inspections. We deal, this division deals with, at least last year in 2018, I'm looking at the monitoring report as my source for a lot of these numbers from last year. They had over three hundred data requests that they processed. Um, they deal with our temporary signs and special events, um, that, because they're very temporary in nature. And they assist other departments, like I noted, with their code enforcement. And so I gave an example here, a few examples. So, uh, we've worked with the city forester and how do we deal with dead and dangerous trees on property? Well, we've got a process laid out for that. Um, engineering on grading without permits, I mentioned that one. Water issues, we had a failing sewer line earlier this year, so they were able to help get that corrected, working with the property owner. And certainly business license violations, if there's someone's serving underage or something like that, they implement the administrative side of that. And, um, our appeals process that goes along with that. So that's consistent throughout the city. They are also sort of external to the residents that live here, but also internal to other city departments. Here's a chart of some recent activities. So, um, the orange line there is our violations and then the gray line are our code cases. So a case could have multiple violations in it and this information was in your background. So certainly you can see before, um, the 2013 decision was made, we had just about, I think it was two thousand violations, just with our one FTE person that we had that was working complaint-based only. Um, and then we had, you can see over there, a little over a thousand different code cases or violation properties that they were dealing with. Of course, the number of violations went up when we went to more proactive and had more staff to be able to address those issues. And we have since come down quite a bit actually, because people are, I think are more educated on what the rules are. And we've changed some of our rules, quite frankly. So all that has kind of led to the, the downward slope in the last couple of years. And then the chart on the right talks about where our complaints generated from. So the blue ones are from staff. We're not able to break it down proactive, complaint-based, our system isn't set up. But this is, this is as good as we could get, um, the ones generated from the public and the ones generated from the staff. Um, the ones in blue also do include rental license inspection. So if we went into a unit, it's not just property maintenance, it includes property maintenance and rental, because our inspectors member are doing both as part of their jobs. But so we're not able to separate.
Benson, and I'll go to Dan.
Sorry, I'm hogging.
Probably gonna ask, ask my question, I'm sure.
Um, thank you for addressing the spike as being related to the increase in FTEs. Cause I had written a note to ask you about that, but you beat me to it. Um, but the other thing I wanted to ask about, um, it just, did the, um, status of the housing stock in Burnsville play into that spike at all? With, um, you know, the foreclosures of a lot of homes kind of tailing off around twelve to thirteen? Um, did that, and if we don't have it, that's okay, but did that influence how these numbers kind of took a jump?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, Councilmember Workman, exactly.
Cause I know when we bought, bought our house, I'm gonna give up here pretty soon. A lot of the homes we looked at were kind of in disrepair because they were left, um, as a result of the oh eight crash. And so I, so observation, so. Go ahead, Mr. Keeling.
Okay, Dan?
Uh, any estimation of a breakout, not an exact number on the blue, uh, chart? How many are apartment, uh, rental license inspections versus all other code enforcement? I mean, you have any sense as to the, where the volume is, majority one way or the other minority?
I do not.
And you don't care to venture a guess because you're on camera?
Well, no, cause I don't want to be wrong. I don't mind being the camera, I just don't want to be wrong.
Right.
You know, if these, if I had data that was before twenty thirteen on both charts, you could kind of read into it a little bit, but they're different years. I don't have that for the one on the right to kind of know what the total was. So, um, if we had it, I, that was the intent was to get, get it to you, but we just, we just don't enter in our data that way, um, to be able to articulate that.
To follow up on Councilmember Workman's, there is a very definite correlation to the hiring of the four people, uh, and the proactive nature. But absolutely some of the numbers were homes that were in disrepair. But I, I would have to say the overwhelming majority of that spike is because we actually went out looking to, to, to take care of things proactively as opposed to just waiting for people to call.
And if I can add to that, I, the, the violations, I believe would include from the apartment inspections as well. It's not just property maintenance, it includes all of the work of the division, which is, which.
It was a lot. You know, we, we have those, those historical places that had some trouble with some of those.
And also our mobile home parks.
Yeah.
Where we had to do a lot of work and support the owners of the mobile home park and some of those. Yeah, Dan G, did you have a question?
No, I was just gonna comment, uh, twenty twelve, you were there when we did all this. And, you know, the cause of it was because we were doing it by complaint only, things kind of festered out there and we didn't see it coming. And then suddenly we had a hundred and twenty-eight units over here with pretty much anything that could happen, happened in that building. And it was, which kind of was the straw that kind of broke the back, like, we gotta, we gotta get on top of this. Cause we really had a slumlord charging market rate to people that couldn't get apartments other places. And he was taking a total advantage of these people and it was just, it was out of control.
Um, so looking at what other cities do, we, we, I'm not going to read through all of this, but there's a mix. So there's this, uh, these are just our market cities and then we had some other information in your packet from some non-market cities that do specific proactive programs. So, um, there is a component to proactive in the majority, um, of these code enforcement programs to how we used to do it before we had a specific proactive initiative where it was mapped out and we're going to these specific areas. So, um, some do, some don't, but it just leans a little bit more to those that do, but not as prescribed as our program is. I'm listing in your background, the pros and cons, you know, certainly, um, there's a lot on both, on both sides. And, um, it's, we hear from, from residents that think we don't do enough in the code enforcement and others from why are you picking on me, right? So we get the, we get the whole gamut and you get the phone calls too. So I'll just read some of the pros and cons and, and not go through this whole list, but you know, there's consistency when we drive through the city. So it's consistent throughout the city, through all the neighborhoods and what we're looking for. Certainly it's preventative, it's easier to catch things when they're smaller rather than they're big problems and we have to kick people out of their, their units or their homes. And, um, it's proactively keeping properties and people safe, just like we do proactive on our assets. This is for private property, you know, and some of the cons are, um, it's only enforced when complaints are received. So only those that complain get the city service, right? So if people don't complain, that's fine. Um, those that do, and some of them do complain regularly, are getting more of our city resources than others. Um, violations certainly can grow into bigger things over time and it's, it's reactive. It's more responsive, um, than being proactive and intentional in what we want to do. And there's a whole bunch of other things, you know, uh, people like that, um, they don't have to call us and complain. There's always a, usually a concern about, oh, I don't want my neighbor to know. And certainly people can complain anonymously and we have different ways to do that. But being proactive, um, can help alleviate some of that concern. So now turning this into your budget discussion and how does this translate to help you, um, get the information you need to make your decision? If we eliminate proactive, uh, I believe, and our staff believes that we can save half of an FTE. Uh, probably best to do that with our consulting dollars, uh, forty-five thousand dollars. Our building inspection request is for two staff, one building inspector, one admin person. Certainly we could use two to three inspectors today, we're that far backed up. But we don't, we're not, I'm not here asking you for that because we don't hire for the peak, right? We don't, we, we know we're on this trajectory that's upward, but, uh, under Kelly's guidance and city manager's guidance here and previous and your guidance, you know, we, we budget for the average condition. So sometimes it's peak and we're busier and sometimes maybe it's a little slower, we can get caught up and reach out to those who haven't closed out their permits and whatnot. So, um, the ask is for one inspector. And we did shift work temporarily from a couple rental inspectors, so that work, they're behind on those to be able to catch up on some of the roofing inspections. So we were able to do that, we're still doing that, um, that's four workdays per week. So it's almost the equivalent of, of one person being out there helping with roofs. So some background on the building inspection staff, just to give you, um, an idea of what we've got going on here. We have seven and a half FTEs in this division. Um, you can see the staff there, one and a half assistants, um, a supervisor and our building official, someone who does the plan review. So when someone submits a permit, they review the plans. And then we have our electrical, our plumbing inspectors, um, and then our building inspector, which I think I left off there, but it's in your background. I apologize for that, um, but there's a total of seven and a half FTEs there. Uh, Dan?
What is the average lead time for each one of those to do an inspection?
Well, I think it depends on the time of year. I mean, our typical time that we tell people, non-busy time, is two weeks for a commercial plan review, for instance. We can do a shed or something smaller within a week. Um, but if our lead time for inspections, I mean, peak this summer, we were out three and four weeks to get someone out to someone's property. Especially when you get into those specialties of electrical and plumbing, cause we only have one person and there's only one person who can do those.
So if someone has a wall open, they can't close that wall, do those inspectors come three, four weeks later to inspect that property?
That's correct.
Which leaves them with a crew to do nothing until.
It backs everything, it backs everything up, it backs everything up. So what folks try to do when they get the permit, come in and get their roofing, you know, they schedule their inspection right away when they get it, rather than waiting till the work is done. On some larger projects, we block out time, like on our multifamily buildings, because we kind of know where they are, so that this inspector can spend all afternoon out there, for instance. So there are things we try to do proactively to provide the best service that we can with the resources that we have, certainly. Um, and like on the roof permits, I mean, our commercial activity took precedent over those. So we're out four weeks, we kind of had a separate schedule for roof permits than for everything else to be able to try to keep things balanced.
So our residents were waiting a long period of time for inspections on the roofs in order for their vendors to get paid who just put the roof on their house.
Maybe a little bit longer, a little bit longer.
And it's really frustrating to the point where I then get, uh, emails about.
And I'm glad they're calling you.
Yeah, so, and then I have to, um, email Melanie and Jenny and all of that and.
So.
Let the resident know that we'll, Jenny will get back with an explanation, but a lot of frustration.
Yes, for sure, for sure, it's not unnoticed, that's for sure. That's why we have the requests here. Um, just a couple of things about this department, it's a little different than some of our other city departments. Our building official, like his certification comes from the Department of Labor and Industry and he's accountable to the state, right? People call, I want to talk to your boss. Well, I can, I can deal with so much, but I can't override his code interpretation, right? Of the, of the building code. And if, if somebody wants to appeal that, his interpretation, they cannot come to you, they have to go to the state board, um, at the Department of Labor and Industry. So he is, he is licensed and quality control is, is overseen by the state. So he's personally responsible, um, to the state for himself and for those working under him. And so the inspectors are certified and they have to be qualified inspectors. And we have, um, we have very sophisticated buildings in Burnsville. So we're not all just single-family in Burnsville, we have a hospital, we have a power plant, we have schools, we have UTC. We have all, we have all kinds of buildings that are very unique that a lot of other communities do not have, which makes the level of education and code knowledge and sophistication that our inspectors have to have, uh, at a little bit different level than other, some other places. And so the skills aren't necessarily transferable from maybe one city to this city or one, let alone one department or division to another division. So I just wanted to be clear, it doesn't cross-transfer as easily as was suggested at the last meeting to take a position here and just slide it over here in building inspections. Um, the positions are different, um, an admin position versus an inspector position. And then someone who has certification and a certain skill level, um, to be able to do the job, um, and also to do it with confidence. Because we have our building officials certification that this kind of falls under. Okay, Kara?
How has inspections changed over the years? Has it changed over the years?
Well, it.
It, it appears and I, I assume it's because the position has changed, um, the responsibilities have changed. That there need, that there is more time-intensive inspections going on, more inspections for things now that maybe used to not be inspected. But I'm unclear on that, so could you?
I would say, and I'm not the code expert, I, but I believe, uh, Chris Fasty would tell you, the codes have gotten a lot more complicated. And they, when they're updated, it is like a big deal to be aware of how the codes are changing. Because it seems to me the changes aren't just minor changes, they seem to be big changes when the building code changes, right? And it goes through a big, long process, so things do get more complicated. We certainly have tried to build efficiencies in and how we, I think, I always come to the how and the what, right? The how we do things with some online services and, you know, there's a lot of, um, opportunity to be had with our software. It's, it's not as good as it could be or should be for us to be able to do more permits online. So we have, there's a lot more that we, a lot more help and assistance and efficiencies that can be created when we get a new software system. At the time, it helped us because we had less people and we, we were able to offer online permits for the first time. And then they switched vendors and done upgrades and we just haven't kept pace with what the modern technology is. That system is, I think, over ten years old now and it's, there's way better products out there now that are more on demand. So, so we have tried to do efficiencies along the way. Roofing permits, for instance, you know, we can take pictures, we used to go up on roofs and that became too dangerous, too much of a liability. So now we take pictures and we accept those for the sheathing part of the inspection before we do the final. So we do things like that as well.
Yeah, and one just to add to yours, the other part in all of that code is also the fire code, which also comes into it. So you will have to have that discussion with the fire marshal. And, uh, i- it's not just for apartment buildings and for our single-family dwelling, but for our mobile parks and what all of that means. So, and you're right, it's very complicated and there's layers of all of that.
Kara?
So when the inspectors are doing their inspection and I know that they need to follow state's building code, does the city have a layer of building code on top of that that adds to the complexity of their inspections?
No, we cannot. The state is a minimum building code, we can't have anything higher.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, it's.
That helps.
Yeah, it's just that it has so many layers and, um, and the buildings that are being built today, uh, with the high roofs and all of the different things that, uh, businesses put into it is so much different than it was back in the nineties. Dan, and then Vince?
We're, right now, we have a, a building boom going on in Burnsville, which I know our inspectors are going crazy about. But you're in our economic development group, what's in your pipeline? You don't have to tell us what it is, but what do you see coming at us that tells you it's either going to get worse or slow down?
Well.
Or just remain at this pace.
We have just as many projects in the pipeline as we have done in the last eighteen months that are on, coming online for the next eighteen months. Interest remains very high in Burnsville for, um, office, office warehouse, like John Allen's building down in the MRQ and for apartment buildings and infill development and, um, some tear downs. You know, we can't, I cannot wait to use that elf money for a teardown, you know? So, um, we're selling it and I'm optimistic that we're gonna have one of those projects before us.
Expecting new projects as long as fi, as well as finalizing projects that are coming out of the ground right now.
Exactly.
And not to mention what our homes are up to.
Exactly.
Yeah. Vince?
Thank you. Um, Jenny, I didn't want you to sit up here and defend yourself all night. Um, you'd mentioned earlier that somebody said or claimed that it was easy to move somebody from code enforcement to inspections. And I just want to clarify that I, I was asked, I asked if it was easy to move somebody from code enforcement to inspections. And that's why we're, I think, discussing this and there was some other interest among the other council members. So based on what you've said, it's, it's not something that's just simply done because there is some background, there's some studying, there's some licensing that needs to get done to get to that position. And so the answer to the question of, is it easy to move somebody internally is kind of no. You know, you need to hire somebody that's trained and kind of ready to hit the ground running based on the things that we've kind of been discussing here tonight with all the activity that's here. I don't want to put anybody in a position, um, asking them to do more with less. So I just wanted to clarify that. I don't want to diminish the work that you or anybody on this staff does, cause I, I understand it's, it's hard and complicated work. So, thank you for helping answer that question.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anything else? Okay.
Madam Mayor, members of the, I put some questions up here that will maybe help guide your discussion, if, if there's any additional information that's needed. And if, if you want to eliminate the program, that will result in a service reduction, cost savings, maybe you want to reduce the budget or put those dollars elsewhere. Maybe you want to continue the proactive, maybe you want to modify it in some way, shape, or form. So just looking for your direction, so that Kelly and Melanie can move forward with bringing you a complete and hopefully supported budget document next week, so.
Personally, I'd still like to look at proactive versus reactive. I don't know, is this as, as in-depth as we would go, or could we dive deeper like we had planned at the all-day?
Yeah.
As far as a philosophical change, or are we trying to do that right now?
Vince, you know, I agree with you that we should continue with the proactive. Here's the thing.
I don't think you said that.
No, did, did you say?
I was asking if we should continue the discussion about proactive versus reactive, or if we're trying to make that discussion.
I think what staff is asking, do we do any cost savings?
I think the question...
Part of the proactive process.
Well, I think the question was about the FTEs more so than the philosophical change of proactive versus reactive. Or are we trying to make that decision right now?
Melanie?
Madam Mayor and Council, I believe a couple of weeks ago, the, the two issues got kind of meshed together a little bit. And, and when we came before the council, we were talking about our budget proposal, which was for the building and fire inspector positions. The proactive code enforcement policy was brought up. It, and so I'll defer to the council on when you want to have that discussion and how you want to have it. We certainly, if the council wishes, talk a little bit more tonight about what your needs and desires are for the program. We had been preparing for it, for the all-day work session. So it's, I think it's important for you to have a discussion on what your expectations are, so we can deploy resources in a way that meets your goals and objectives.
Just really quick.
Okay. Jenny, and then I'll go to Cara.
If I can add to that, thank you, Madam Mayor. The information that staff put together, I don't know that you're going to get any more information. So at the all-day, what I would think would happen is we'd say, "Do we want to talk about this? Is it a just-do-it, don't-do-it, or future work session?" One of those options. We brought you information that would be in a future work session kind of background for you to have the discussion, because that's what was asked for, for us tonight. So that's, I don't know that you'll get any more information if you were to have a future. If you do, then just be clear about what additional information you would like.
Cara?
I am in favor of eliminating the proactive program. The reasons why I'm in favor of eliminating that program is not, is not even really to do with, with cost. Number one, I think we're in a position right now that we're doing pretty well with how everyone is doing. You know, we, we don't have excessively rundown properties that are just blighted all over and that, that type of thing, that a city is needing to take aggressive action to correct. Number two, it's not a good introduction to the city when we have new residents come in and one of their first interactions with the city is to get a letter. And although we're used to them, and we look at them as informative, that is not how the recipient receives them. When someone receives a letter, even like as kindly worded as you can be, it still needs to state, "This is the violation, this is what can happen," that type of thing. And that causes a lot of stress and worry and concern, because this isn't something they deal with day in and day out. This isn't just part of their work. And that puts us in more of an adversarial relationship with our residents. And I don't think that we need to be in that position, or to seek out to be in that position. Now, if something happens and it is brought to the attention, okay, you know, you can look at it, assess it, look at it, at if, if this is something that needs to be corrected. But I don't think we any longer need to go searching that out to try to have a negative engagement with our residents. I mean, we did hear from a resident who talked about seeing someone patrol their neighborhood and taking down notes. That was, you know, shocking and threatening to them. That's how they saw it. That is not the only person that feels that way. And, and I don't think that that's out of, you know, where we're, where we're looking at it and thinking, "Oh, well, that person's just a snowflake for thinking that." No, if you're seeing someone driving around and taking careful notes of your property, I mean, that's going to ramp up stress again. And having that negative interaction, you know, because you have a car with a city logo on it, and that's what's happening. And they may not know exactly what's going on. Why are they taking down this information? Why are they looking things over? So I, I think at this point, we're in a good position. We've already seen that the number of complaints and violations are really coming down. We have recovered from that, you know, kind of housing crash, where there were a lot of abandoned properties and having issues going on. So I think we're in a good position, and now we should work a little more on having fewer, seeking out fewer negative interactions with our, with our residents. And again, I'm not saying our department is negative. I'm also not saying that once they're contacted that they are not polite and professional and helpful. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying we get too used to how we look at things, and that these are just very normal things. And we forget what it's like to be on the receiving end of that, because it's not normal for everyone else to do that. You know, it's like being called into the principal's office. It's not pleasant. So that's, that's why I'm looking at doing this. If it ever became a problem again in the future, we can always change policy again to go back to, you know, a proactive stance, or just do a one-year sweep, or, you know, whatever that is. But I see no reason to keep it for now. It served its purpose. So we should, we should be done with it.
Vince?
Just going to piggyback off of that a little bit, on top of what Cara's speaking about, we're also going to see an influx in rental units in our apartments. And I guess, as I've understood it, our proactive code enforcement can still do their job, but my thought would be to focus more on the life safety hazards on their to-do list, rather than the aesthetic standards of, well, we've talked about this at length. So, well, I don't think we should completely eliminate code enforcement. I, I think it would be wise to consider re-navigating the compass to focus more on life safety issues rather than dandelions.
Madam Mayor, Council, Jenny, would you be able to, to talk a little bit about the prioritization of responses? Because I think that gets that council member Workman's question about where we focus our resources, just for point of clarification. It might, it might be helpful for you to understand how Jenny's team...
For everybody, yep.
Yeah, approaches it.
Thank you. So we do have a prioritization list where life safety is first, and that's where most of our resources go to. We get that, that, I mean, that's just, just a priority. And I think it's even outlined in your policy, where we talk about what the priorities are. I think there's about three tiers. So usually, the, the nuisance or the aesthetics ones are kind of supplementary to something major that's already happening on the property, for certain.
So I think at this point, I would be comfortable just doing away with the supplement. So if somebody is out looking at a life safety issue, one of our code enforcement people doesn't need to supplement their report with those aesthetics. This is what I'm getting at ultimately.
Well, one of the things that staff did not do is put all of the emails that have, that we had, from all of the different people. But when the article hit the paper in August, there were a lot of response. One of them is in the background, where the gentleman talks about how sad watching a once thriving and beautiful city fall into decline, and the council is willing to let it happen and doing a lot of that. I think if we're looking at proactive, and to get to your point, Cara, is there a way that we can do the letters that go out in a more humanizing and caring way? So change the letters, because I support the proactive approach, because we're not getting at all of them. And we do a sweep across the whole city once every three years. So you're not in the same neighborhood, but we're trying to cover the whole city. The other part about all of this is we talk about improving our tax base. When the value of a property begins to decline because it's not being taken care of, it has a direct correlation in terms of market value. And it has a direct correlation, then, in the overall market value of the city, and why we have the kind of rating, bond rating that we have. But our staff can't get to everything, so they do a good job and try to get to all of it. But when I see all of the letters that we get from residents, because there's a lot, but staff didn't put all of it in here, I think you only put two of those letters from, in the background.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that's correct. That's all that I had at the ready. I would, I would just like to note that we had very little time to turn around this background to get to you in short order. This was planned for January, so my apologies if I left something out. I mean that sincerely. I, I thought, and I thought we had them all, so.
Yeah, because the thing is, I think I'm a gentler, kinder letter, because I've seen, we've talked about this with Public Works, Public Works letter have been amended. And it's, it's more human speak and get-out-of-government speak. So it's kinder, it's gentler. And people do. We have seen from the beginning, when people know what is a violation, and there is a human contact, they get it done. When I look at where we were and where we're at now, it is about who we are and what our culture is as we continue to move forward. And, and just making sure that we all practice good neighborly. I'm, right now, we have a gentleman that is living next to a rental property and is frustrated because the owner isn't addressing the issues, but it has a direct impact on his property. And frustrated with our process, because it doesn't get to it as quickly as they want. So you have a conversation, but your conversation is trying to also find out where the owner lives, so that you can have a conversation for him to, him or she, to repair the property. So there's a lot more to it, and it's, it's a lot of housing stock. And I think we need to continue to do what we need to do, but in a gentler, more kinder way. Cara?
First of all, with, with all due respect to our resident, I strenuously object to the characterization of Burnsville, that we are sliding into decay and ruin. I strenuously object to that. And that we were a once thriving city, I strenuously object to that characterization of Burnsville as well. We are a thriving city, and we are a really good city to live in, and we're thriving, and we are doing well. So I do object to that characterization of, of Burnsville. As for the, the resident who is upset because there is a rental property that's not being taken care of, whether it's proactive or complaint-based has no bearing on that whatsoever, because I am sure that they have put in their complaints on that property. So either way, that situation is either addressed to their satisfaction or not addressed to their satisfaction, no matter which model that we would follow, whether that would be complaint-based only or proactive. What we're looking at is, do we seek out systematically inspecting everyone's property? Do we send our employees out, you know, driving around to take notes, to look at people's homes and take notes about things that aren't just life and safety situations, but everything? Because, you know, our enforcement persons are both experienced and highly trained. When they're looking at a property, even when they're looking at it from the street, their eye is catching everything. They're doing a really good job of that, and they're writing it on down. So is that the highest and best use of their time? And absolutely, I know you guys prioritize. I have no doubt that you prioritize your times. What I'm saying by this is, I do not agree that we should continue to send them out, especially looking at our residential and our single-family homes, and just looking at each property and writing everything down. They have a lot on their plates already, and I would be much happier if they were able to get to those types of things. Because if I remember correctly, we also have some overtime, we have some volunteers that assist. We, as council, are directing them to try to do too much. So let's scale it back to complaint-based, so that they can do the job that they need to do, because two-thirds of their job is in rental and needs to be focused on rental and rental inspections. So that's what I'm looking at on this. So there's, there's multiple aspects of why I think we can go back. And our properties do look good. Our housing stock looks good in town. When you go around town, it does look good. We can always change back at a later time if we decide that this just is not working.
Jenny?
Madam Mayor, members of council, just point of clarification. We are paying them overtime to do roof inspections.
Only roof inspections?
That's correct. That's correct.
Not the other?
That's correct.
Okay. Dan?
Cara, I agree that we are, we're not, we are not a city in decline in any way whatsoever. But I will submit that at one point, we were struggling. We had, we had police stations inside of our apartment buildings. We had to gather all of our multi-housing people together, because we were having issues throughout the entire city. We, we created a rental licensing that was a voluntary registration. It was no charge. We had a kind of a strike system that if you were doing well, you would never pay. And then Country Village came upon us. And when that happened, and we had to displace 128 families, working with the county and other agencies, to shut that slum down, because it was dangerous to everybody's health. Our eyes kind of woke up a little bit, that we need to pay attention to what's going on in our city. And all, and throughout the years, to 2013, I was gone by then, unfortunately. But, but they hired everyone. I was looking at that graph, and it was amazing, because I was, I was working with investors at the time in the housing business. And I was just looking how, from, what is it, 2013, 2014, down to 2015, we had that dip. That was probably one of the height of all the houses being sold that were foreclosed on and everything like that. So it wasn't, it had nothing to do with the recession, but I think it had a lot to do with the fact that we were out knocking on doors and doing that thing. I've heard from a few people about the letters, and I agree with that. I, I was talking to a gentleman a few weeks ago, that he'd gotten a letter from us a while back, and I don't, he didn't tell me when. And it kind of upset him, because he felt like he was being told something was wrong. He felt like he was being threatened at the same time by the city. But then he went on to say, when he called the city to talk about it, he had a very good response from our staff, and they worked things through, and he was satisfied with the final result. And so it was the initial contact, which you alluded to as well, which really creates angst with people. And that may be part of the big issue of this, is how are, how are we dealing with our people? You know, how, how are we approaching them to say, "Hey, you got a problem..." You know, how, how are we approaching them to say, hey, you got a problem here? If you have, if you need help, let us know. Let's see what we can do to find resources to help you, as opposed to you have 10 days to fix it and you're going to get this and blah, 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 and get that out there. And I understand that has changed in our letters going forward. I do, I do agree, we are doing better in town and I don't know if it's because we're inspecting, but our, but we, when you look at the graphs, it's, it's going down and it may be because we have been on top of it and we're keeping the property, properties up and people are in tune to all that. Vince, I'm, I'm glad you brought up priorities and inspections because that was something I wanted to talk about as well, is what is our priority when we inspect? And, you know, how do we get things done? It's, it's, when you really kind of put out everything that our people do, it's not just driving by somebody's house and telling them they have peeling paint on their eaves. It's so much more than what, than what I even knew we were doing with that group. And so I thank you for that input. Right now, I, I think it may behoove us to sit down and, and at our all-day or what, sometime and talk about what are the priorities in our inspections? How do we put this together? How do we communicate in a better way with our public and let them know that it's not us and them, it's, we're all here together to make this thing work? And so I, I thought I was going to be in favor of, of more of a tell-on-your-neighbor kind of program, but I don't think so. I think, I think right now, I think we should stay the course and keep doing these inspections.
Inspections or code enforcement?
Code enforcement and inspections, both. And it's, and we can work our way through it and find out what our priorities are along the way. I don't think it'll get done in this meeting. A lot of things came out in this meeting tonight that were, I wasn't expecting and I think there's more to talk about. I don't want to throw out the baby with the bathwater here.
Dan K.
I'm waiting to hear what Mr. Workman...
He already, he's...
I was going to say to Dan that Jenny indicated that this is as much as we're going to get, so we could kick it to the all-day for more discussion, but it sounds like as far as data goes, this is it. I mean, I'm happy to abstain to...
Stay the course? No? You're happy what?
If the preferences...
I'm, I'm just trying to understand where you're at.
Just happy to be here.
Okay. Yeah, I'm trying to understand.
Just to answer the question about, does the council want to continue with the current proactive?
If, if the preferences to kick it to January, I mean, I don't think my opinion's going to change, but if, if we need to do some more soul searching amongst other council members, I'm okay with...
I'm not looking for soul searching, I'm looking for us to just identify priorities.
Yeah.
I think, big statement of facts here.
Jenny?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, so we do have our code enforcement policy, which we can get before you, that has our priorities in it. I have a list that we use as a working document and I just don't recall if that's crossed over into your policy or not on what our priorities are. I mean, we can bring that, if that's additional information that you want, we can bring that. We can bring back a revised letter if that's what you're looking for. We certainly can do that if there's additional information you're looking for.
I think that would be helpful. A revised letter that you can work with our communication staff, bring some of our volunteers and say, if you received this, how would you react to it?
Sure.
You know, humanize it, take all government speak out of it. So where are you? Because Dan K. is waiting to hear what you have to say.
I'm waiting for Dan K.
Answer to question number three. Can I flip a coin for you guys?
Yeah.
Does the council want to continue with the current proactive program as structured?
I think I answered that earlier and I said I'm okay with continuing proactive code enforcement if it's related to life safety issues, but I'm not interested.
Apartment, not property maintenance.
That's why we have the priority conversation.
And life, life safety is, has a higher priority.
Yeah.
But it's not just...
We should continue that. I'm, I think what we were getting at was prioritizing that over dandelions. Or am I completely off-base?
Nope.
Where I'm at right now.
So do you want proactive or complaint if someone has dandelions?
Number three. You want to answer that?
Complaint. Complaint.
Complaint-based.
Complaint-based.
Sorry, I'm losing my voice a little.
So that, that's the policy discussion that staff is waiting to get answered tonight. And that's one of the questions, do we want to move to complaint-based on property maintenance? Shultz is a yes. You're a yes. Councilmember Gustafson is a no. Madam Mayor has not weighed in yet.
No, I already said, I would, no, I already said proactive. To stay the course.
Well, I think it has to be said, we are still going to be doing inspections. We still are going to be enforcing our property maintenance code. We are going, what the discussion is, is, is to go back to a complaint base, which it was forever until we put this proactive in place. And what really triggered the proactive was not the property maintenance, long grass, dandelions. It was a serious apartment slum problem. We've now addressed that. We've been through all units twice in the last six years. And the trend is going down because I think the message is clear, plus the heavy lifting is done. For me, it's really now switching into maintenance mode, protect what we've created. But we, do we, you know, does that have to be inspections every three years? I would propose that we move that to a six-year cycle and cut it in half today. So a property would have six inspections to complete the entire cycle of all of their units. I think we can back off of, I, I don't think we need the same level of, of activity in the, in the area of apartments. And I'm okay with going back to complaint-based because that's what it still is to some degree. We still get complaints. I still submit complaints because I see things that the proactive aren't catching because they're, they're, they're not going to drive every street and look at every house every day or every building or every property because it's impossible to do. So I think our greatest inspectors, in fact, are our residents who care about the city and are willing to do an anonymous, what's it called, action tracker? What's our app?
Request tracker.
The tracker.
Request tracker.
Request tracker, to fill out the request tracker anonymously and point out an issue and the city does very well in working with that property in order to get it fixed. And, and so I would go to complaint-based as a philosophy and I would also stretch out the apartments to six years from three. And staff can work out the details.
I am in favor of that.
So still go on the proactive, but six instead of three?
No.
Let me understand, so you're...
They say complaint.
Huh?
They say complaint.
It stays on complaint, but what's the six years? So...
Apartment, rentals.
Just the apartment?
Rental inspections go on a six-year cycle, not a three-year cycle.
Okay.
Which will protect what we have, all of the good stuff that we've done and the heavy lifting they've done, we're going to maintain it. We're not going to let anyone turn into a slumlord again. But we don't have to cycle through every three years, I think, to do that.
No, it's six years.
Pardon?
No, it's six years.
Well, no, it's, oh, gotcha, that's what you're saying, right. Yeah, I mean, they're going to get inspected every year. We're just not going to cover their entire number of units in a three-year cycle, it'll be a six-year cycle. So it's still achieved the same goal, but it'll be less of a burden.
So you have...
Good idea.
Three members of the council who says, go to complaint-based.
Madam Mayor, just for a point of clarification. The six-year rental inspection is, we didn't get into a rental inspection in the presentation, so I just want to be clear, that was not covered. That's something new. And if you want information on the impacts of changing rental inspections from every three years to six years, that may be information that you want, that was not covered here. But I'm just, I'm confused because we're adding in a new, a new initiative program with rental license inspections versus proactive property maintenance inspections.
I would suggest that we put that on the all-day work, work session to look at the rental licensing part of the inspection.
It's just a process change. We're still going to inspect, we're just going to do it over a longer period of time. All the words were going to come in, it'll take us six years to complete all of my units if I owned a building instead of three years.
I don't know if I have all of the information from our multifamily team. I don't know if we have all of the information from our multifamily team who works with the multifamily managers and what their issues are and how they need us to help with some of that. Jenny?
And Madam Mayor, how would the fees be impacted for the decrease in service? I mean, we...
I think there are some questions that outstanding for the rental license that I'd like to understand better.
Melanie?
There's only a fee if they do something bad.
Madam Mayor and Council, perhaps can we have a little bit of a compromise? It sounds like we've got a three to two to move to a complaint-based system, but perhaps we can keep this, the rental cycle on the all-day work session, allow our staff to do a little more research and bring it back for discussion and it could very well be a just-do-it, don't do it, or we need more information, refer to work session topic. I, I don't think we'll lose a whole lot of time, Councilmember Keely, being that we're at the holidays, but that's, I'll offer that up as a compromise or an option.
I'd like it to go to the all-day work session so that we, staff will have time to pull the information together and we understand what that means and the impact of what that means to our multifamily housing.
I, I think it's, it's, I don't think it requires any further discussion personally. I think the impacts are positive for the city, positive for the owners. We're still inspecting, we're just not doing as many units when we come visit. That's all it is. I...
I guess my only question would be with the increase in units, would, I, I, and it goes back to what I had mentioned to Jenny earlier, is I don't want to put somebody in a position that's asked to do more with less. So if I had one question, it would be if we were going to change it from three to six with the apartments that are going to come online, you know, in the next year and then the ones that we are anticipating in the next three years, is there, is it necessary to look into that with this modification? And I'm asking your city manager that.
Kara?
That's also why actually going to six is attractive because I'm looking at the number of apartments we are going to be having come online. When you have a set number that you have to get through every three years versus now you have six years, to get through a slightly larger number, that to me seems like a more manageable ask for our staff to do.
Okay.
And, you know, the nice thing is we do have, you know, the ones that are coming on board are, are new, so they're not going to be run down and deteriorated. I mean, they have, you know, they have the working...
Fresh paint.
Fire alarms on them, that type of thing. So I, I have a lot less concern over the new ones.
I do.
I was going to say the same thing. I'm not concerned about the new ones, but the ones that are on the fringe.
Yeah.
If we wait six years to see some of them, we'll be, we'll have a country of village on our hand again.
Yeah, the ones that have been, those in the seventies.
Give them six years to just do it.
Yeah, we're not, we don't go visit a spot or visit a building or a location every three years and inspect the entire thing. We do a third of the units in that each year.
It's a random...
That's correct.
Yeah, so it's every building, every rental project will have a certain number of rooms, one-sixth of their, sorry, rooms inspected every year.
So if I have a 30-unit building, I'll inspect five and I'll come back the next year and inspect another five.
That's what we're doing now, only in three years. That's exactly how it's been done ever since we put it in place.
That's correct.
Yeah, so all we're doing is inspecting fewer units over, each year, over a six-year period. We're still going to every property every year. I can understand why you might have had a concern going, thinking that it was, I only come by every three years.
But that's five, that, that first five I, I inspect, it's not going to be six years before I see that first five again. And if they're already on the fringe...
Yeah.
You give them some time to stay there.
And you have to acknowledge, we've already seen them all, every single unit, twice in the last six years. I mean, and you can see the trend in a number of situations. I think it's more maintenance mode now. We don't have a country of village situation anymore.
We got some that can be close to it.
But we're handling it.
Melanie and Jenny, I believe that you have the majority of the council, you have a three-two to go to complaint-based.
Thank you.
Okay.
And...
And the six-year cycle for apartment inspections.
We have both of those noted. Thank you.
Okay. So you have a three-two. Melanie, is there anything else?
There is not, Madam Mayor.
Okay. With that, we stand adjourned.